Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We heard you, JJ.
All right, just checking in with you all. I can see everyone. Everything looks good.
All right, everyone. Thank you so much for your patience. I heard you before, Trustee Phoenix, before I hit the gavel. I just wanted to make sure you're still there with us.
I am here and good to go. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, and with that, it is 2:09 PM on this Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll call?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Trustee Hall?
Present.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
And Clerk Woodley, present, and trustee student Meyer Hartley?
Here.
All present accounted for, madam.
Thank you, and I will also share that in a bit, our student trustee will be heading off for some rehearsal for Honor Orchestra, and we will be joined at that point by her vice president, Peyton Weir of Reno High School. Is Peyton already here? Hi Peyton, we'll look forward to seeing you up here. All right, everyone, that closes item 1.02 and brings us now to item 1.03, our Pledge of Allegiance. And this afternoon, we are honored to welcome Lieutenant Commander Brandon Perry, a dedicated member of the United States Navy Reserve who drills out of Fallon, Nevada. Lieutenant Commander Brandon Perry recently returned to WCSD after serving three years on active duty in Norfolk, Virginia, where he supported Rear Admiral Stefan at Navy Reserve Forces Command. During that time, he served as Training Officer for a new Navy-wide Human Resources Software Initiative scheduled for implementation across the fleet in the coming years. Please join me in welcoming Lieutenant Commander Brandon Perry as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the virginity of justice for all.
Thank you so much. We'll now move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nukmu, Northern Paiute, and Miwe, Western Shoshone peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. That closes item 1.04 and Section 1 in its entirety. Moves us on now to Section 2, our Consent Agenda items. Consent Agenda Item 2.09 is being pulled from the agenda in its entirety and will return for consideration at a future meeting. I have not received any notice from any other trustees regarding the interest in pulling any one item between 2.02 to 2.08, nor do I see any lights on now. JJ, do we have any public comment on items 2.02 to 2.08?
I have no cards for those items.
Very good, then I will bring it back to this board for a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 2.02 to 2.08.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. That now closes Section 2, and we'll move on now to Section 3, our Items for Presentation, Discussion, Information, and/or Action, beginning with Item 3.01, "The Presentation of Washoe County School District Proclamation Honoring Veterans Day" in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only. And we have joining us today our Chief Human Resources Officer, Doug Owen, who will also be recognizing some special guests, Michael Savala from Capital Projects, and Brandon Perry from Human Resources, who we just met. Welcome, Chief Owen.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Doug Owen, your Chief HR Officer, for the record. I'm honored to be up here today as we recognize Veterans Day, and I do not have the privilege of reading the proclamation today. I'll leave that to our counterpart on the board, but I do have the honor of informing everyone that we have over 200 veterans serving with us in our school district. They're in several different positions ranging from teachers to bus drivers to our own HR manager, and that is Brandon Perry with us today. And I will turn the mic over to him if he wants to say anything, and then we can move on to the proclamation.
Welcome, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to hearing the Veterans Day proclamation. Thanks.
All right, well, before we turn it over to Clerk Woodley, I would also like to extend our thanks to Senator Cortez Masto, Senator Rosen, and Congressman Amade for sending recognitions honoring our Washoe County School District employee veterans. And Clerk Woodley, and by the way, feel free to say something too, because there's a reason why you're actually, you know, I mean, you could just read it, but you and also, Trustee Phoenix, this is personal and of course symbolic, but personal.
Oh, yes, thank you, ma'am, Chair. Both Trustee Phoenix and I both serve the United States Marine Corps. I personally got to serve in two campaigns, Operation Just Cause, and Desert Shield and Desert Storm with the Six Marines, Third Battalion. So I feel very honored to be able to read this proclamation. So with that being said, whereas each year on November 11th, our nation unites to honor the bravery, dedication, and patriotism of America's veterans, those courageous men and women who have served with valor and distinction in the United States Armed Forces, and whereas the United States Congress first called for the observance of November 11th through a concurrent resolution on June 4th, 1926, and later by an act approved on May 13th of 1938, established the 11th day of November as Armistice Day to commemorate the end of World War I. And whereas in recognition of the service of veterans from all eras and in tribute to their enduring contributions to freedom and democracy, Congress by an act approved June 1st of 1954 renamed the holiday Veterans Day. And whereas the Washoe County School District joins the nation in recognizing 2025 Veterans Day to celebrate the courage, selflessness, and enduring commitment of all veterans who safeguard our nation's ideals, and whereas we recognize that the impact of veterans extends far beyond their military service as they continue to strengthen our schools, neighborhoods, and communities through leadership, mentorship, and civic engagement, and whereas hundreds of veterans proudly serve within the Washoe County School District today as principals, administrators, teachers, police officers, bus drivers, skilled trades professionals, and support staff continuing their legacy of service and dedication to others. Now therefore, on behalf of Joe Ernst, Superintendent of the Washoe County School District, I do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025, as Veterans Day in honor of all past members of the United States Armed Forces. We encourage all students, staff, and community members to take time to reflect on the sacrifices made by our veterans and to express gratitude for their service to our nation and community. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to get up and take a photo with our staff that are here along with these signed proclamations from our senators and our assembly members. All right, everyone. Thank you so much. So that closes item 3.01 and brings us now to item 3.02, "Presentation and Discussion of Native Culture and Education Program" to include information pertaining to Title VI, Native Youth Community Project Grant, NYCP, Native American Language Grant, NAL, and Native Education Parent Advisory Committee Strategic Goals and Presentation of a Proclamation Honoring Native American Heritage Month in the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation and discussion only, and we have some wonderful guests with us. We have Dr. Paul Lamarcas, our Chief Student Services Officer, and he is joined today by Fawn Hunter, Native Culture and Education Manager, Denise Miles, Native Youth Community Project Coordinator, and Jake Chapin, Principal at Natchez Elementary School. Welcome, everyone. And just so everyone knows, we will toggle over because trustee JJ Phoenix will be reading the proclamation later from his virtual location.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, for the record, Paul Lamarcas, Chief Student Services Officer, and I really don't have a role, especially because President Smith just did all the introductions, so thank you. But since I practiced, I'm gonna do it anyway.
I love to help. I love to be helpful.
Thank you for your ongoing support for native education and culture in our school district. It's been wonderful over the last several years, and thank you for celebrating Native American Heritage Month this month. We are going to talk to you a little bit about our Title VI programming, our Native Youth Community Project Grant, our Native American Language Grant, as well as some of the strategic goals from our parent advisory committee. And so my job is to introduce our amazing panel or speaker, well, at least two out of three, no. And that's Fawn Hunter, our Indian Education Specialist, Denise Miles, who is our coordinator for the Native Youth Community Project Grant, and of course Jake Chapin, our Principal of Natchez.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, Pia Tobino, Fawn Hunter, the Native American Culture and Education Manager. I am a member of the Duck Valley Paiute Shoshone Tribe. I'm also a descendant of the Washoe Tribe in Nevada and California, Pyramid Lake, and Pitt River tribes. With that being said, I'm really excited to talk to you today about our children in our district as well as our staff in our district that have been supporting our children. The first slide, sorry, forgot about this little thing. The first slide that we're going to really talks about, we're looking at our Native American students population, and with this population, I want everybody to realize that 506 group is our specific group that we're focused on. Those are Native American students that have descendancy lineage through either a parent, a grandparent, or themselves. So they're enrolled tribal members or descendancy through their parent or grandparent. So that's how we collect our information for the Office of Indian Education through the federal government. That's how we report our numbers. So that might look a little bit different when we're reporting to the state because the state asks for self-identification numbers. So that's where you see the difference. Non-506 are the self-identified students within our school district that are self-identifying as Native American within our district. Our programs really focus where the funding is on our 506 students. That gives you a little bit of difference between the two within our programs and those that aren't in our programs yet. Our numbers come from our count day, so you'll see in our October numbers really focused on our 506 and non-506. So when you do see some of our numbers, and when Denise talks about some of our numbers, they'll look a little bit different than what you see on the self-identified that go through the state numbers. But our real true focus again is the 506, so our students that are enrolled members, you'll see in 2025, 26, you'll see on that far right in the blue, those are the numbers, are the students that we're working with within those programs, and then we collaborate with different programs in order to service our students so they can be successful in the district. This focuses on our Title VI Indian Education Grant. Our Title VI grant services different ways. One of our big ways is our language program. Paiute language is services three of our schools, Reed High School, Spanish Springs, and Worcester. Within those three high schools, we have worked with the state to create the syllable literacy. Last year was the first year we gave the syllable literacy, and that was for Spanish Springs High School. Two of our students passed that. So we're on our way this next school year on making appointments with the state to have our other schools participate as well, Reed and Worcester. So this pushes us forward, but this just gives you an idea of what our Title VI Indian Education Grant pays for specifically for those three classes. It's also, we're working with the state to create a section for eighth grade, probably within the next year or two, to take the same test, same type of test, because we have our Native Language Grant at Natchez, so they'll be rolling up into our middle school where they may be able to take those tests as well. So this just shows you kind of where we're at, but it also shows 506 students and non-506 students that were paying for this class, so this class is open to all students in our district. Our Title VI also pays for backpacks, school supplies, and other materials that the students may need. Our Paiute Language Bowl is one of the things that we host through, originally our Title VI program paying for the teachers, but also we collaborate outside the district with Line County, Humboldt County, a few of the other counties to bring our students in that are also speaking Nuku, and having them come in and compete with our students here in Washoe County School District with the same language. This is paid for through family-school partnerships, so this is paid for through outside of our own grantee funding, and it comes from our family-school partnership funding. Our reading part of that, we purchase books so they can have a home library at home. So we purchased pre-K to 12th grade, and this is for students in our program. Every student can get more than one book usually, and we host them at our 5450 Riggins Court site. And then we also, when they have school site events, we bring them to the school sites and then let the parents pick up there too. Academic supports, we have our Tribal Youth Advocacy Specialists. They used to be SGAs, and after we wrote the NYCP grant, we transferred them into Tribal Youth Advocacy Specialists. So Denise will talk more about that, and then we also part of the Indian Education Advisory Committee through the state. We are currently meeting today and tomorrow, so I was in Carson City today meeting with our stakeholders and talking about what our initiatives, our next steps, and how we support our Native American children throughout all districts. And just talking about how we support as a district and what we do, and then kind of sharing ideas between districts. I believe that brings me to Denise. She's going to go ahead and talk about our NYCP program.
I'm Denise Miles. I'm the NYCP Coordinator, and I couldn't be more proud of the team I support, the Tribal Youth Advocacy Specialists. All four of them are here today and just acknowledge their hard work. With over 6,500 in-person connections with over 400 students across all of our middle and high schools in the district, they've just had tremendous outcomes with these young people. What you won't see in this slide is at the start of our grant, in 2223, our chronic absenteeism rate was 48%. This last school year, we got it down to 31%, which is a huge achievement, and comes through the connection building that our team is doing and the goal-setting work that they're doing with our young people. Do you want to go to the next slide? This is our graduation rate breakdown. Again, what you won't see here is that at the start of our grant, we were at 59% graduation rate for our students with 506 forms. This last year, we were at 87%. So amazing outcomes. That's through the hard work of this team and the work our students are doing at school, so we're just very proud of that work.
The whole thing? You don't want to talk at all?
Go for it.
All right, so on our Native American Language Grant, first, I think I've said it a million times, but a massive thank you to Fawn Hunter and Delisa Crane who put in a ton of the work to make that happen. I threw in some good ideas and some not-so-good ideas, and they picked through which ones they should put in the grant, and they made it all happen for us. So a big thank you to Fawn and Delisa, who I know is retired, but... What the grant allows us to do is we have a full-time language teacher and a full-time certified teacher to help us draft a curriculum. And then that curriculum is, our hope is, once it's done, can be shared and replicated at other schools that serve Native American students in the Paiute Language Culture Class. And so that teacher is also here, standing, hanging out in the back. Our certified teacher is the 2022 Nevada Teacher of the Year, Deanne Hicks, writing the curriculum. So she'd stand up. All right, she's not going to stand up, but a huge thank you to her. She works tirelessly to make sure that that class has a strong curriculum and that we're able to draft that and provide that to our students. When Mr. Ernst and I, when he first hired me into the position, we talked at length about the importance of working on a reservation school and like the responsibility, moral imperative, to bring culture to our students. And so this grant is a long time coming, and with the support and the vision of Mr. Ernst at the very beginning, when we started talking about what we want Natchez to look like, we're here with a lot of this with our Native American Language and Culture Grant. Our students have 30 minutes of language and culture four days a week, every student in the building. And so it's really amazing to walk in, and the first 10 to 15 minutes is immersion style, and just hear the teacher and the students talking back and forth and practicing their language. And we talked a little bit about... And we talked a little bit about chronic absenteeism. Natchez today is at about 6% chronic absenteeism overall. And that is relevant, because I think in, doing no small part to our Native American Language Grant, right? Like, our students get to come to school and be recognized and find their identity and learn more about who they are, and that happens only because we're able to provide these kinds of services. So I think the grant ends in a year or two. I'll just take this time to make a shameless plug about, like, we probably should find some, if we like chronic absenteeism being low, maybe we ought to find a way to make this a permanent thing.
You're selling me. You're selling me. Keep going.
If you guys don't like chronic absenteeism low, just go ahead. So, but it really is amazing. Our kids get to do a lot of things. But I think the most important thing, and I steal it from Ms. Kailani, who's the teacher, is, she says, the way, first thing she said to me about our program is, in order for our students to understand others, first, they have to be able to understand themselves. And that's really what this program allows our kids to do, is not all of them are fortunate enough to live in a home that is superculture-forward. And as stewards of their education, it becomes incumbent upon us to help provide that, and that's really what this program does. So before I get super emotional, I just want to, again, thank Fawn and thank the board and Mr. Ernst for allowing us to have this program and do the things we need to do for kids.
Thank you. And I'll say, Deanne, I know you didn't stand up, but maybe we can get you up for the photo later. Maybe we'll compromise. Okay, okay.
That takes us into the Title VI Native American Parent Advisory Committee. Most of our parents have regular full-time day jobs, so they're not always able to attend our board meetings. But they are a key part of what they want to see their children doing in the school district. So this is year three of five of their strategic plan, and it was really looking into that language. How do we revitalize it? How do we grow it? We had lost a class, I think, during COVID, so we were only at two schools, so they really wanted to see it grow back. And that, since then, we've placed in Worcester, so they're at Worcester High School, and then again at Natchez. So that's, they're really seeing their vision come true within the school district. And also during this time when they were writing this, they already had SGAs. So that's why you'll see Goal Four was the Native Youth, the support in the schools. But the NYCP has really turned that around. The team has been amazing since COVID. So really, it's the students, it's the staff, everybody working together collectively to have a great program. And it has really turned things around for our students and families. And with that, I also want to recognize our tribes and land-based tribes that are within our area. So our collaborators that come forward and have come forward a few times. I know NCII is this week, and our tribal leaders are advocating for issues. So I want to recognize the Washoe Tribe in Nevada, California, Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and Reno Sparks Indian Colony, who have really infiltrated in different areas within our program and supported our program in different ways, and continue to support us, as well as you all as leaders, too, at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Fawn. That was wonderful. And I know we have Trustee Phoenix on the line, and I believe he has some things that this is, Natchez is one of his schools.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, there. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
All right, so to the group there, Peshawta Yungona, Nu Machina Menina, Nukuii Tukara. I just want to tell you, thank you very much, Peshawta, for all the staff that are involved with, going from Paul, Fawn, Jake, RSIC, Denise, Delisa, Deanne, all you all that are involved with this, that are setting the framework for other districts in the state to look at on how to approach this, because we all know across the nation, well, you may not all know, but across the nation, you know, our culture and our language are very important and very imperative. And that is what the nation is looking at, trying to maintain and keeping is very key to us. So the district is doing a fantastic job keeping it going, and as you heard Jake say, we don't want to lose this. We want to keep it going. And I want to go back to and finish up with that the chronic absenteeism, it's not just this school. It's the other schools. When you talk about those relationships with those teachers that are there all the time, you're talking about the connections that they have with those five-star schools in that community, that they are there all the time. And you were talking about the trust that they build within that community. And that's where that starts to narrow down, bringing that family unit together. And this is a great example of doing that. So I just kind of want to echo, that's the framework that seems to be working, and the things that I'm seeing and hearing and understanding between five-star, and especially this school here that has really grown quite a bit over the last couple of years since Jake has taken over, and the community is bonding together. So just with that, that's just my comments that I want to put out there to everyone. Again, thank you, Fawn, for taking the lead and really setting the way with the state and really pushing it hard to try to set this framework so that we can be successful. So again, thank you very much for that.
Heck yeah, Trustee Phoenix. That was amazing, hearing you speak from the heart. The energy and the love that just came through with that was incredible. And you're totally right. This is such an amazing team. And I know someone else sitting next to me that would also like to share some words.
Yeah, Trustee Phoenix, I would say the same, and thank you very much for those comments. Fawn, Denise, Jake, the entire team, just want to make sure that we say thank you for your investment in our students, the passion, the way you show up every day for the work that you have, the genuine care and outreach that happens day in and day out, and to see some of the progress that's being made. There's a lot to be proud of, and that comes from your leadership, your commitment to our students and our families. I want to say one other thank you, because this was a significant grant for Washoe County School District, and it was a highly competitive grant throughout the country. And we have a real unsung hero on our team that sometimes does a lot of work in the background and maybe doesn't get some of that acknowledgement. And I see her out in the audience, and so I wanted to acknowledge Lauren Olin and all of her efforts to write this grant. This kind of teamwork is really emblematic of what we want to do in Washoe County School District. And when we're doing it, we're seeing the results that are happening, and so I wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Amazing. All right, seeing no other lights on. Trustee Phoenix, would you do us the honor?
Yes, I will. So whereas the Washoe County School District is committed to celebrating and affirming every student by name, strength, and need, and providing culturally sustaining environments where our diverse student population can grow and thrive. And whereas the Washoe County School District proudly includes more than 2,000 students who self-identify as Native American, serves over 900 students throughout, through the Native American Culture and Education Program, and represents 99 tribes and nations within our district. And whereas the Washoe County School District Native American Culture and Education Program collaborates with our local sovereign nations, including the Washoe Tribe of Nevada and California, the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, and partners with families and the Native American Parent Advisory Committee to ensure culturally enriching and sustaining programming and services for our native students. And whereas through the commitment of the Native American Culture and Education Department, the district continues to expand access to Indigenous language instruction in Numu, Northern Paiute language, at Natchez Elementary, and courses offered at three high schools where students may earn world language credit towards graduation while deepening their understanding of Northern Paiute history and culture. And whereas the Washoe County School District recognizes that the rich histories, traditions, and contemporary contributions of Native American communities are integral to the cultural fabric of our schools and our state and our nation. And whereas a high-quality education develops minds, opens hearts, nurtures talent, and solidifies character in families, elders, elected officials, and all relatives work to build stronger communities, knowing that traditional and public education lead to a greater quality of life, wellness, and equality. And whereas Native American stakeholders continue to share knowledge, develop strategies, support educators, and strengthen community partnerships to create meaningful opportunities and brighten futures for our next generation. Now, therefore, on behalf of Joe Orange Superintendent of the Washoe County School District, I do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month and urge all students, staff, and families to honor the histories, culture, and contributions of Native American peoples who ancestors are original Indigenous inhabitants of what is now the state of Nevada, and reaffirm our ongoing commitment to quality, inclusion, and respect of all cultures.
All right, well, we would love if everyone, including everyone that's here, to come up and join us in a photo. All right. That closes item 3.02, and I would also like to reflect for the record. We now welcome Peyton Bedeas. Welcome. Welcome. Thanks for being here. All right, everyone. We'll now move on to item 3.03, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action to Accept the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report that ACFR, ACFR, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025, FY25, as recommended by the Audit Committee for Possible Action. And we have with us today our Chief Financial Officer, Mark Mathers, our Director of Financial Operations, Kyle Rodriguez, and from Crow LLP, Jeff Jensen and Moran Murphy. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam President, trustees. You know, besides the daily work that our office, the business office, does, our buyers, our accounting and payroll staff, and so forth, all the work they do, there really are two kind of momentous, multi-employee, multidisciplinary efforts that come out of the business office. And one of them, you're well aware, is our budget process, right? The other, though, is the production of this annual comprehensive financial report, which in English is more or less audited financial statements. And again, it's a tremendous effort over many, many months involving many, many team members of the business office and other offices, too. So it is a team effort. And before we turn it over to Crow to give their remarks and their presentation of the audit results, I wanted to introduce the person who led the team this year, Kyle Rodriguez. He is fulfilling our controller role. Previously, he was the CFO for Lyon County School District, but he did work at the business office before that. So he knows Washoe well, did tremendous work, as did Mindy Capron, our Assistant Controller in the office, and all of the team. But I'll, again, before we turn it over to Crow, I think I'll turn it over to Kyle to kind of explain a little bit more about what this document covers and maybe what you might want to focus on as you read it.
So thanks, Mark. I'm Kyle Rodriguez, for the record. So in front of you is the annual comprehensive financial report, which is our actuals for June 30th, 2025. So we talk a lot about the budget, having a balanced budget throughout the year, and this is where we ended up. So it is our financial statements, if you're new to the government accounting. Through that, we have 53 governmental funds. So the governmental funds will be the general fund, special revenue funds such as grants, special ed, capital projects, and debt service. We have four proprietary funds. The best example will be the Enterprise Fund or Nutrition Services Fund. Proprietary funds are set up for business-like activities, so they're full accrual all year long. The district in whole, we present quarterly reports to you, and those are mostly on cash basis. We identify a few key or major revenues throughout the year that we accrue back. It's typically only a few days in between. But for the end of the year, we go to a true modified accrual where we accrue back to revenues from when they were earned and expenses from when they were incurred. As you know, in our S354, we have to have an annual audit from an outside CPA firm. And that is Crow LLP. They are here to make sure that we are presenting financials accurately and fairly in material respect, and Mark and I are here to answer any questions if you have at the end.
Thank you, and welcome back to the district.
I turned it off. There we go. I had a 50/50 shot. Good afternoon. I'm Jeff Jensen, the engagement partner from Crow, and I'm here with Moran Murphy, our senior, I said senior, our manager, sorry, Moran. And I didn't mean to demote you there. And it's our privilege to present the audited financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2025. I think we have very good results to bring to the board's attention today. And I'm going to turn it over to Miranda to take the first couple of slides.
All right, thanks, Jeff. So as your external auditors, we have a few responsibilities that we have to follow. So our role is to express an opinion on the financial statements as well as federal compliance. We evaluate all of our audit procedures using a risk of material misstatement, and we also evaluate and test your internal controls related to financial reporting. And we do all of that by using a risk-based. Did I turn? Okay, good. All right, so we kind of do our audit work in three phases. So Phase One sort of takes place in the May-June timeframe. That's when we focus heavily on the internal control procedures as well. And then we give a little bit of a break to the management team, and then we come back in September. And that's when we really do our heavier lift of auditing, you know, balance sheet accounts, income statement accounts. That's when we do all of our substantive testing. And then in October, we sort of wrap everything up in a nice bow and then do our review over the ACFR, the financial statements. Okay, management is responsible for preparing the financial statements. They are also responsible for making sure they're in compliance with the Nevada state requirements. And they're also responsible for developing and maintaining internal controls over financial reporting and making sure that they are in compliance with various accounting standards and those types of things. Okay, during the year, we did have one new accounting standard that was implemented by the district. It's called GASB Statement Number 101, and it's related to. It's called GASB Statement Number 101, and it's related to compensated absences. So the district has always been reporting compensated absences. But under this new standard, it sort of expanded the types of leave that need to be included in that liability. So after the district did their analysis, they determined an additional $4.6 million in leave liability that needed to be recorded. And just to clarify that, it doesn't hit any of the funds, that is just for the government-wide financial statements. So new accounting standard had a restatement to beginning net position of about $4.6 million, and that's what you'll see on the Statement of Activities there for that restatement. Okay, and happy to report that we did not have any corrected or uncorrected misstatements. So that would be audit adjustments. So anything that we saw that was differing from supporting documentation, you know, that would be when we would have to adjust the balances to make sure that they're materially accurate. So we didn't have any of those. And then the uncorrected misstatements are sort of smaller audit adjustments that may come about. And when those happen, we sort of evaluate them all at one to make sure that it's not, you know, making, turning into a larger adjustment. So happy to report no corrected or uncorrected misstatements for 2025. I could take this one, too. For our final required communications, we did not have any difficulties encountered with management. We didn't have any disagreements over how things are reported. They didn't go out to any of our competitors to sort of get a second opinion on things we were telling them. And we didn't have any major instances that would require your attention before coming to the meeting today. All right, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Great, thanks, Bran. So next, we'll talk about the different opinions that are part of this report. Normally, there are several opinions, and this year is a little bit different. So first, under the financial statements, received an unmodified opinion. That's the type of opinion you want. In more layman's terms, that's a clean opinion without modifications. That's why it's called unmodified. So again, that's the type of opinion you want on your financial statements. The part that's different is the uniform guidance, so that's your federal audit. So this year, unfortunately, the federal audit guide has not been issued yet. Normally, that is issued in July, and we are still waiting for it. So because of that, we cannot conclude on the district's compliance with federal requirements. So we have essentially separated that out of the report this year. Normally, it's all in one report, and this year it'll be in two reports. So at some point in the future, we will finish that work when the audit guide is issued, and we will then present an opinion on federal compliance. So until then, we're in kind of a delayed status. And that is a Washoe County School District issue that is a universal problem across the United States right now for all governmental audits. So, and Crowe, being a national accounting firm, we have a partner that's on the Government Audit Quality Center's Executive Committee. So we're in DC, sitting at the table, listening to when things are coming out from the, from the source. And unfortunately, the information coming from there is that it's not anytime soon on the audit guide. So we'll just continue to be in a holding pattern essentially related to that. What we have done so far is we've audited from a draft version of the compliance guide. So essentially, we've done 95% of the work that we need to do to conclude on your federal compliance, but we can't draw the actual conclusion until we have the formal audit guide, so. On the next slide here is just some financial information at a high level. There's a lot of numbers in this report, so what are some of the key numbers that you can pull out of this? And so I think that's what we've tried to demonstrate on this slide. You can see 2024 in comparison to 2025. And I know in the world of school accounting and public education, there's a lot of turmoil as far as funding, and especially with the end of COVID and that era of funding. And yet, the district has demonstrated here a fairly stable financial position here related to your total assets and your total net position when you compare that to the prior year. Also, just probably more on the day-to-day business of the district is the general fund, fund balance position. You can see last year's ending position was 71.1 million, and this year it's 74.2 million. The other significant event that occurred financially for the district this year is you did issue new bonds related to your construction program there in a total of $210 million. All right, other thing that's important to bring your attention is we have no reportable findings related to the audit for this year. So we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control to bring to the board's attention. So again, that's good news to report. And just to bring our comments to a close, the district's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. There were no audit adjustments made by us to the numbers that were given to us to audit. There were no findings that were reported as part of this audit. And management was very helpful, as well as other departments outside your accounting team there and providing us with the information we needed to be able to complete our audit. So again, very clean audit results, hard to beat, no findings, no adjustments with a clean opinion. So with that, we'd have to answer any questions.
So no questions, but I know he's not going to bring it up. It was in the staff report, but, so thank you so much for this, truly. For anybody who's listening and watching, there's doing a good job with your budget and your audit, and then there's doing an exceptional job. And exceptional is the Washoe County School District. And I know it is not just one single person, but we have a secret weapon. And he is flipping through his papers right now, our CFO, Mark Mathers. And I do want to point out, because this is something that I've actually paid attention to and celebrated every year that I've been on the board, that this is the 25th year that WCSD has been recognized with the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. This is like winning the Super Bowl 25 times in a row, which the New England Patriots almost did, but you managed to do with finance, and we are just so incredibly lucky because we do this work, not just because we're required to with the government, but because we are in charge of a precious resource, and that's taxpayer money. And these awards and this recognition and this additional clean opinion is a testament to that. And so I'm in a clapping mood, so I'm going to say thank you to CFO Mathers and all of the members of our team.
Thank you, Madam President. While the Lions have never been to the Super Bowl, having 25 Super Bowls here will take. And so I just wanted to echo the same sentiments of President Smith to our entire finance team. We appreciate what an exceptional job you do. And in an organization our size and the budget that we are operating in, it gives us all great confidence to know how well we are being stewards of taxpayer money. And we appreciate your leadership, we appreciate your attention to detail. And to our external auditors, we appreciate the report and the findings and say thank you to all.
So JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, all right, whose jump ball is this? And yes, that's in honor of you and our basketball. Who'd like to take this motion or feel free to make a comment?
I'll take it, Madam. Thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees accepts the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025, as recommended by the Audit Committee.
I second.
All right, trustee Westlake got there fair and square. All right, we have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by trustee Westlake, seeing no lights on. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, and hopefully, this is the most celebratory ACFER review that you do with any of the boards you work with. So thank you so much for traveling here, we appreciate you, Kyle, Mark, everybody on the team, thank you. All right, folks, that closes item 3.03, and we will move on now to item 3.04. Making great time here with the Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action for the Board of Trustees to terminate the charter contract or restart under a new charter contract with possible required conditions for Encompass Academy Charter School pursuant to Nevada Revised Statutes NRS 388A.300 following three consecutive years of one-star performance on the Nevada School Performance Framework. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today Melinda Baker, our Area Superintendent, Kendra Fox, our Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Rochelle Proctor, our Coordinator of Charter School and Extended Studies, Sarah Montalvo, our Deputy Chief General Counsel, and Dr. Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation. And I know we are going to invite these guests up, and we'll hear from them in a moment, but I do want you to know that we are incredibly honored to have Principal Adam Khan. He will be here, and he is the principal of Encompass. And also, their Board President Kathy Broline is also here and joining us. So thank you so much, everyone.
Good afternoon, President and Superintendent and the esteemed trustees. I am Melinda Baker, Area Superintendent. And we are before you today with our role as district charter sponsor of... First, we'll begin with Encompass Charter School, who has earned a one-star rating for three consecutive years in a row. The state defines for us as a district charter of a school in that circumstance that we have the task of determining whether to terminate that charter or to restart that charter under another contract. What we're going to do today is we're going to present the options that the state defines that we have. We're also going to explain what a charter termination and a charter restart entails. And then we are going to zoom in a bit towards Encompass's performance data currently before we offer you our recommendations. So here to kick us off is Deputy Chief Sarah Montalvo.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and Trustees. Sarah Montalvo, Deputy Chief General Counsel, and hopefully, this there goes. I just want to present some of the legal background and parameters for... Oh, there's Rochelle regarding this decision. And so that way, you have some background as to why we are here and kind of the legal requirements that you need to focus on for your decision. So what we are here with is it's in our statute, in our NRS, NRS 388A.300, subsection 1, requires that the sponsor of a charter school who has the lowest ratings under the Nevada School Performance Ratings for three consecutive years, it's five consecutive years under the old NRS, which I will get to in the next slide regarding the legislation. They, it requires you to either restart under a new charter contract or terminate the charter contract. I highlighted the shall language in the language in this, in the statute. They use shall rather than may, and so that indicates it is mandatory for the sponsor rather than permissive. So effectively, what this tells us is you have two options here. If they meet those low ratings, is to terminate or to restart the charter under a new charter contract. And like I said, there was recent legislation in SB 460 regarding this provision. It did change it, rather than looking at a five-year window, it just changed it to three consecutive years. So in case you were wondering, you may have heard that there was recent legislation around this. That's what the new language says. And additionally, the new language in the legislation gives charters the option, and the sponsors an option, to not have to look at termination or restart of the charter if they fall within these two exceptions. However, as Dr. Davidson will go into later in the presentation, both of the charters that we are going to be looking at did not fall within these exceptions. So if you are looking at restarting the charter school, what does that look like under the law? It doesn't really guide us that much, is effectively what the law looks at. What we do know is that if you are going to restart, you have to do so under a new charter contract, which means they, that you cannot amend your current, the current charter. And effectively, then, the charter school will have to go through the whole process of restarting and applying under the charter provisions in NRS 388A. And please also note, too, any new charter contract must have a six-year term. However, with that six-year term, if we go back, you know, here, under SB 460, even though there's a six-year term, they still, if they receive three consecutive years of underperformance, we will be back here in three years if you decide to restart the charter and looking at the options of terminating or restarting the charter. Oh, and I did want to say that the NAC does provide us a little bit of guidance of what restarting a charter looks like. Not, not a ton of help, but it effectively says that we can solicit applications for a charter contract from committees to form a charter school and charter management organizations. And it does require that we review that application on an expedited basis. And I did just want to focus on this provision in the NRS. The Nevada Department of Education pursuant to this statute has to review us as a sponsor every three years. And one of those provisions as part of their review is to make sure that we are compliant with all applicable statutes and regulations. And so if we are not in compliance, effectively, part of their determination could be that they would revoke the authorization of a sponsor to sponsor charter schools. So I put that in there just because I wanted to put you, give you what the law said and that unfortunately, here today, we are in the position of, as the sponsor, that we have to follow what the law mandates, and that's to either look at restarting or terminating the charters. And with that...
And before we pass it on, thank you so much for that overview. I know we're going to have another one of these after, but you did very, very well in making it very clear to everyone that we're simply following the rules here.
Yes, thank you.
Rochelle Proctor, for the record, I'm going to pick up here for just a couple of slides. So how Washoe County School District would support a restart? We would expedite the review process. We will ensure that all requirements for restarting a charter are implemented in accordance with the standards established by the district for charter restarts. And we will conduct quarterly reviews of the school's submitted progress reports, including the relevant metrics outlined in the school improvement plan that we conduct. District staff conducts annual charter school monitoring and provides feedback to the leaders. We provide quarterly meetings for our charter school leadership. Technical support is provided by our district's grant department, and the school improvement department meets with the charters to review and help finalize their school improvement plans. We are moving on to Encompass. And we just thought it would be important to see the timeline of communication between the district and our two charters that we're discussing today.
I actually really appreciate this because we have gotten feedback in the past, prior to you being in your role, that the communication and the timeline, sometimes there's been differences of opinion. So I want to thank you for putting a very clear timeline here so that everyone has the same working understanding of when certain meetings happen, when communication was exchanged. That is a very welcome improvement, and we're very grateful for it.
Okay, Laura Davidson, Director of Research and Evaluation, for the record. So my job tonight is to walk you through some of the data that produced these one-star ratings to help inform your decision at the end of the presentation. But I thought before we jumped into the Nevada School Performance Framework data, it's important to just understand the populations that are served by Encompass Academy. So on this slide, you can see that last year for 2425, they served 153 students on count day, but had up to 158 students throughout the year. On the right there, you can see their transiency rate. So last year, it was 31%, and this year, it's 15%. The transiency rate is essentially just looking at the proportion of the students who don't stay there the entire year. Either they transfer in, they move school, or they transfer out at some point. So it's a kind of a proxy of risk in some ways. You can see down in the bar charts below that Encompass serves 100% of students who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. They're a Title I school. Compare that to the remainder of the Washoe County School District high schools at 53%. I think notable here is their special education population is almost double the proportion of special education students that we have in our traditional WCSD high schools. They have a slightly higher proportion of EL students. And then over on the right-hand side, we have a risk measure. So that's our Washoe County School District early warning system. Essentially, any student who gets three indicators on a variety of variables like poor attendance, suspensions, being retained, transiency, credit attainment, if they have three or more of those risk factors, we consider them high-risk for dropout. So it's just another measure of who Encompass is serving. This year, they had a slightly lower proportion of high-risk students compared to years prior and lower than our WCSD high schools as a whole. That's what that call-out box on the right is saying. Their demographics have shifted a little bit over time, so as... So as far back as 21, 22, and 18, 19, they were serving as many as 50% of their students were considered high-risk for dropout. So their demographics have shifted a little bit over time. But I think it's important to just ground us in who the population is that is served by Encompass Academy.
And Dr. Davidson, if we could go back on that slide. So Principal Khan, I know we're going to hear from you in a minute, so I want to say this to you. Thank you for your school serving a representative number of our students. When I see numbers like this, particularly from a charter school, I know that you open your door to every child. Like the Washoe County School District opens its doors to every child. And that's not an opinion, these are numbers that we see in front of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, they typically serve high proportions of students who are credit deficient in particular. All right, so for the remainder of this presentation, we're going to learn a lot about the Nevada School Performance Framework. And up there is a screenshot of one of the reports that we provide to all charters and our district schools, telling them how they score on this each year. It's a very complicated set of measures. It's a there's a 90-page manual that's associated with it. If you ever want to dig into the business rules, we'll stay out of those tonight. But I do want to provide just some backdrop on how these numbers come to be calculated to produce a one-star rating. So our accountability system looks like many others across the nation. That's because the buckets that we have to measure schools against are defined largely in ESSA. So they consist of state test scores, they consist of growth measures in elementary, middle school, graduation, advanced coursework participation, English learner growth, and then some additional measures, including chronic absenteeism and credit attainment. The high school performance framework looks very different than the elementary and middle school framework, but you can see up there that the points are calculated up to a total of 100 points. So that's the denominator that we look at. You can see for the high school performance framework, the main driver of the star rating is graduation. It's really the culmination of that experience in high school. So it makes sense, it's the driver of the star rating, but worth 30 points. Academic achievement is based largely on ACT and Nevada Science scores. In the middle, you can see you can earn points for participation in advanced courses as well as the tests associated with advanced coursework, including AP tests, that kind of a thing. And then student engagement for high schools based on chronic absenteeism and ninth grade credit attainment, and then English learner growth as well. So this is the data for Encompass, going back to 2017-18, which is the first year that we had the high school framework here in Nevada. On the far right-hand side, you can just kind of see their general trend data. But when we first had the high school performance framework in 1718 for Encompass, you can see down there at the bottom, they earned a one-star rating. And then they have an acronym next to that star rating, which is CSI. That stands for Comprehensive Support and Improvement. It's the State Designation for Low Performance. For Encompass, it's based on graduation rate being under 67%. So Encompass carried that designation all the way up to this year. They exited their CSI status because they raised their graduation rate above a 67%. So that's what it means when it's a none by it. It means that they have exited their statewide designation for performance. In general, you can see that their performance improved over last year. So currently they have a 13.8 as their index score. In order to be a two-star, you need to have at least 27 points. So you can see they're about halfway there to a two-star rating. And improved 3.3 points. You can also see down there at the bottom, just a trend line of their enrollment data. Their enrollment has increased over the last few years as well. This is just detail on the rates themselves. So all those individual indicators that add up to produce their star rating. And you can see that three of the indicators have improved and the others have declined. But I want to point out down there at the bottom, there's a very important note that I'm going to get to later that is an important driver of the recommendation that we bring forth tonight. So we know that Encompass is serving a higher-risk population perhaps than other schools in our district. So we thought it would only be fair to compare them with other schools that are serving similar demographics. So on the left-hand side, you can see Encompass Academy's performance on NSPF compared to other Title I high schools here in Washoe County School District. And you can see they do underperform. Part of that is because of the population that they serve. On the right-hand side, we compare them just against the other one-star high schools that we have in Washoe County School District. We don't have many of these, the majority of them are alternative education sites. But you can see in some years they outperform, in some years they underperform. But in general, they're serving a very similar population to some of our alternative education sites. So as was mentioned earlier, SB 460 offers some new exemption language to turn that shall into a may. So we did check for those. The two exemptions that are offered under SB 460 is the first that if a charter school reaches a 22 points instead of 27, which would be the trigger for two-star, then they're eligible for that first exemption. And the second exemption, if they didn't reach 27 but were at 17 and improved, then they would also be eligible for an exemption. So we did check for those with Encompass Academy. But as noted earlier, they didn't reach either of those thresholds, so it's still a shall in the legal language. So back to that footnote that I alluded to earlier. There is a unique situation with the high school performance framework for all of high schools that I'm sure you probably hear complaints about. And that is that three of the indicators on the Nevada School Performance Framework for high school are not based on the most recent year of data. They are not based on the ceremonies you attended, graduation ceremonies you attended in June. They're based on ceremonies that happened a year ago. So the indicator is lagged for a variety of reasons. So that data is all based on the class of 2024, not the class of 2025. And graduation is the main driver of star ratings for high school. So we have the kind of unique situation for Encompass that we're able to predict exactly what their star rating will be next fall because we know what their graduation is right now. So we know what that's going to turn into when they get their next star rating. So you can see in general, their graduation rate, on-time graduation rate has improved the last three years. And this year went up to 91.3% from 69.5%. Yes, very impressive gain. It was one of their school improvement goals, especially nice to see it. And because that graduation rate is as high as it is, we already know that Encompass is going to earn all 25 points on the graduation indicator for next fall. In addition, we know what their five-year graduation rate is. So if students don't graduate in four years but stay on for an additional fifth year, they get a graduation rate for that and get points for that. So we already know that Encompass will get two points for that in the next fall star rating. And then we also know their advanced diploma attainment rate on this year's cohort and what that will land. So if Encompass does absolutely nothing else, which we know they won't, if they earn no other points in any other area, they're already going to start next fall at a two-star status. So because of that kind of unique lag data situation and we know exactly where they're going to land, they would have met the exemption criteria and they would not have fallen under the 388 language. So that is why for our factors for consideration, we looked at that in particular, that we already know where they're going to land and they would have met the exemption criteria if not for this kind of funny nuance in the high school performance framework area. And it was their school improvement goal, so we know they've been working intentionally on that. So based on that and the fact that the demographics of Encompass are particularly unique with double the proportion of special education students as other district high schools, terminating them of course would pose a difficult situation for many students, but particularly for a fairly specialized population with unique needs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Area Superintendent Baker.
So we actually recommend that the Board of Trustees approve that Encompass restart their charter under a new contract with a couple of conditions that we feel will be productive for that. We'd like for them to conduct a diagnostic review to include a needs assessment, stakeholder input, and a root cause analysis. And this is really just to anchor them at where they're at right now and really fuel that restart process. They're under fairly new leadership recently. And we also think they'd benefit from an academic consultant. You'll notice that we're not specifying what type of academic consultant because we really want them to use that needs assessment to sort of lift up what particularly they're going to need to acquire to help their next steps. We'd like for them to communicate this board's decision today within a seven-day period to their learning community so that they are well-informed. And then we'd like for them to meet these conditions by January 30th. And that's a deadline that we did speak with them and collaborate about. Essentially, we want to give them adequate time next semester to engage the restart process, should you all approve that they do that. That way they're able to utilize the resources that these conditions put in place and then return to this dice in April to propose to you what their new charter contract would entail. And at this point, President Smith, if you don't mind, I'm happy to welcome Principal Khan.
I would love that. Welcome up, Principal Khan. And as you come up, I also want to say thank you so much for the invitations to visit your school. And I am one of the trustees that was very pleased to accept that invitation and get to see the work happening at Encompass firsthand. And I believe Dr. Dai also.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate the opportunity. Again, my name is Autumn Khan, I'm the principal at Encompass Academy. And I really appreciate the thorough work by everyone here to make sure we can have some type of continuity of education for our kids. I was told I have unlimited time, so I want to respect everyone here and also the next people on the agenda and everyone else. But I do want to take this opportunity to give you a little history of our school, why we're here in the first place, because I think it's really important to tell you where our school's been and where it is now and our goals moving forward. It is great, great news that we're going to be a two-star school next year. That's something that was a huge goal when I first took over. I was a teacher for six years at Encompass Academy, teaching mathematics. And I was in my classroom that was kind of on a part of the building, I didn't get to see the rest of the school. So I was in my classroom, doing my thing, building relationships with my kids, getting to really change a lot of my students' minds on what mathematics is because I absolutely love math. It's the language of our universe, it's the language of everything around us. And being able to help communicate that to young people was like really one of the biggest thrills in my life. And I just assumed what was going on in my class was what was going on in the rest of our school. And our principal left a few years back and moved across the country. And kind of we had this hot potato of things that the board came to me and asked if I wanted to be principal, which I originally said no because I loved teaching math so much. And then after a week or two, I realized we need someone in leadership that loves our students as much as I do. So I changed my mind and it was very difficult for me, but took over as principal and that's when I really got to see the inadequacies in our school. We had no money. We had a bunch of unfunded liabilities based off of no money and all that COVID-era funding was going away. We couldn't, you could see our enrollment data, we didn't have lots of kids. And what that doesn't show is the breakdown of those kids. Most of them were 11th, 12th, and we call them 13th graders. We didn't have lots of 9th graders or 10th graders. We had culture issue at our school. We had kids who weren't showing up to school and when they did, they weren't in the classes. They were getting in fights, they were, there was no culture of academic excellence in our school at all. And last but not least, and the reason why we're here is we weren't graduating kids in our high school. And at the end of the day, we do so much that's not on the NSPF, but we need to graduate kids. Because in order for us to continue to do those other things that I think are incredibly important, that I think we all think are incredibly important, we have to first meet the criteria to keep our doors open. So it was rough. Our ship was sinking, large holes, and we had to do everything we can to try to fix it. So we, I mean, I took over, I, principal kind of left, I didn't know what I was doing, I'll be honest with you. And we figured it out. I had very serious and high expectations for my students and for my staff. And my students, they met those expectations. And some of my staff did not meet those expectations. And in the first two years, we lost almost half of our staff. And it was very difficult, but I need people in the building who believe in our kids and believe in our mission and are on the same page as I am to turn our school around. And we're doing it. We've implemented changes to change the culture, get kids in the building. You can see our enrollment data is up. One thing we've had an issue with our graduation rate in the past is because we couldn't keep kids in the building, you saw the transiency rate, is we would have a revolving door members, a teacher, I'd have a new kid every other week and then a kid would be leaving. And we couldn't keep kids in the building. And so what we do is we get a lot of credit deficient 11th and 12th graders. I remember teaching these kids and I'm like, man, if I just had you a few years ago, the work we could have done. And that was something I remember saying for years. And as principal, I got to actually take that idea and test it out. So we went to middle schools. I said, I know the data, if a freshman at the end of 9th grade year is on track to graduate, there's a 98% chance they will graduate. So if they have six credits by the end of 9th grade year, there's a really good chance they're going to graduate. So instead of trying to keep chasing the issue of graduation, I'm like, let's get ahead of it. So we started going to 8th grade classes, schools, middle schools. And we talked with counselors and classes and we said, hey, those kids that are great young people, but maybe need a new venue to really succeed, maybe have a bad relationship with education, have had past trauma that is shading some of the things that they do in school, we want those kids. So I know as we said, our demographic data changed a little bit, but it's the same kids. We saw that our amount of high-risk kids, some of the indicators why it's lower is because we've had those kids longer and longer and they are no longer reading those indicators of being credit deficient and chronically absent because they're at our school for years and we fix those issues, we work on it. So that transiency rate, it's the same kids. I'm telling you, it is the exact same kids. And we've worked every single day to get them in the building. We started with 9th grade. We started with a new leadership, I had not been principal long, but we started and we see those 9th graders that we started a few years ago are now moving into our graduating class. And we see the data is working, the work we're doing has been effective. And I want you to know, two stars was a five-year goal. We're actually ahead of that goal. And I want you to also know, two stars is not our end goal. That's just the beginning. Just like I tell my students, graduation is not the end of your journey, it's just the beginning. The same thing with being two stars. And with all of your support, the support of Melinda, Rochelle, Kendra, all of you guys, we can continue to help our community. Because I saw Superintendent Ernst came to a CSI meeting last year and I really loved hearing you speak, really to the same things I believe in in education and about what Washoe County School District is about, about engaging families, building trust, creating an environment for students to feel a sense of belonging. That's what Encompass Academy does every single day. Our success is your success. We serve the same kids. So I really appreciate the opportunity to tell you a little bit about that. We've seen some of the data, our graduation rates are going up. I mean, data is one thing, some of you have been in our school. And if you haven't, you're going to be in my school because you need to meet the incredible students we have in our building. But the culture we have in there speaks more to any data we can have here. I did share some documents with you about our most recent student climate survey data, which we had two-thirds of our students fill out. And we, I mean, I don't want to go through everything, but our students are more engaged. 90% of our students said, I feel like I am a part of this school compared to 56% of other charter schools. And I don't want to say anything, this is just comparative, every school has its unique needs and unique issues. But I do want to say this is something that increased 19 points year over year for us because it was a big thing. Our students need to feel welcome in our school. We have lots of kids who are bullied at other schools. We have kids who didn't feel like they had a teacher who cared about them at other schools. And we need to work to build that trust and change their scope on what education can be. 90% of our students said, my teachers care about me compared to 66% of the district. One thing, we have a very diverse student body. 92% of our students said that they feel that all cultures, backgrounds, races, and ethnicities get along at this school, which is a really proud thing that I love saying that I think is very important to this board. And then really importantly, we talk about student voice. And Peyton, I'm so happy to see that you're here because I hate as a principal, I never have meetings with students, with parents without students involved because adults make decisions about your future and our students' future without their voice. And I'm really happy that our board recognizes that and has you here. So that's something that I take very seriously. We are a small school, so we have the ability to really respect student voice. And I'm really happy, 86% of our students said that they feel that they are part of our school and that they help decide what should be made better at our school and the school's decisions. That's compared to 57% at other charter schools. These, I mean, I could go through, there's so many promising things in our student climate survey because that's what's important. We got to work on what we got to work on, we have to do what adults need to do. But at the end of the day, we serve only our students. My mission, everything I do is what can I do to help support my students? So I really am proud of these things. I'm happy to see the student voice here. There are a lot of things I could go over, but I'm not going to. You know about our, the demographic we serve. You know about our enrollment data, you know about our credit attainment has gone up. We went year over year from the 60s to the 70s to now, we had 90% attendance, which is incredibly difficult. We're a Title I school and we're not a neighborhood school. So we don't have buses that pick you up on the corner and take you to school, you can walk there. A lot of our kids have to get up at 5:00 in the morning to walk to a bus stop, to go to the transfer station on the 4th Street in downtown Reno, wait for the 16 line, get on the 16 line, get to the closest stop by our school, walk to school. And they do this throughout the year. And that's a commitment and evidence of the work that we're doing, that our staff is doing in the school to make it a place where students can succeed. The other thing I really want to bring up that wasn't brought up is our behavior data. Now, behavior is something we're always talking about. We have increased our population significantly. We've almost doubled from being in the 80s to now, this year we have over 160 students. And our suspension and major behavior issues have gone down year over year. We've implemented restorative practices and really implemented, we talk about SCL a lot. It lives in our culture, it lives in our school, and it lives in our classroom. And it shows, the data shows, we see students as human, as equals, as having real valid issues and we talk to them as such, and it works. having real valid issues, and we talk to them as such. And it works. Our suspension data is way down. We've also looked at alternative ways to how we think about discipline. You know, there's a lot of people have this old-fashioned antiquated view of what discipline is. And discipline should not be something that's punitive or for power at all. And I think we know that. I was really happy to meet with President Smith and talking about philosophy in education. It's just, it's a breath of fresh air to hear leadership having similar ideas, because the future of education needs that. Our students cannot be under the same discipline models of the past. Our demographic of students we're serving is different, and kids are just different today. So I really appreciate that you guys have come in my building, given me the opportunity to talk. I mean, I could go on and on about how great our school is. We have a lot of work to still do. And I want to talk about this recharter. I mean, I will say, there is a little bit, there was some frustration, because we just got approved in this calendar year for a recharter. And our metrics are great. You know we're going to be a two-star school. We got out a CSI designation. We are doing everything right. But at the same time, I understand, your hands may be tied. And I'm also looking at this, and Melinda has been great to, making recommendations that are already in line with some of the things we're doing, and to help us move to the next level, and to try to work on our path towards three-star status. So I'm looking very forward to conducting more needs assessment, talking with families, seeing how we can address their needs, how we can provide a better school and a better education for their kids. So I really appreciate the recommendations, because I look forward to it. And I will do anything that I need to do to create a better environment for my school. That being said, I would love to answer any questions about any of our data, any of our students, or school, or anything at all.
Thank you so much, Principal Khan. You are pure wow. If this is what your students get when they come through the door, I know why they're traveling two hours in the morning to get to your school. That was absolutely remarkable. Thank you so much for sharing the culture of your school and the success in the making for all the students. That was amazing. And you, you had Trustee Westlake in tears, which is always a good thing, 99% of the time. Vice President Mayberry, I see your light on.
Yeah, if I, can I address the speaker? Thank you. So are you a, are you a Lakers fan?
I am a big Lakers fan. I hope that does not affect the decision of the board. I would like to say that Jameer Gibbs and Dan Campbell might be the year.
We've known each other a long time, yeah. I also appreciate you reaching out to me a few weeks ago. And a few times I've been to your school. And I, as President Smith says, I want to echo her sentiments. You know, I know where your passion is. I know where your heart is. And I know this is frustrating, because, you know, you'll be a two-star school. And I'm glad to hear you say that that's not the end goal. You know, I'd like to see you increase that even more. So I've asked a lot of questions to staff. Is there any exemption that we could make? Any, give you more time, because you're right on the threshold, and we have to follow the law. I get it. I understand the frustration. But I'm confident that you'll do well going forward. So thank you. Thanks for all you do for our kids.
And thank you, Trustee Mayberry.
JJ, I believe Trustee Phoenix is interested.
Yes. Yep. Okay, yeah. So thank you very much, District Staff, for that presentation. Kind of gave us some insight. But more importantly, to Principal Khan, your story, listening to your story about how, where you were, where you're at, and how you got where you're going, you know, and thank you for that, all that collaborative effort, you know, reaching your goals, little by little, inching away at it, and understanding the population. You know, it's very diverse and dynamic. Just making sure that you are doing everything you can. It sounds like you are. You're getting all the resources that you need. The only thing I wanted to mention was your community outreach, you know, your community partners, besides just us here at the district. How are you doing that? And how is that helpful? I just wanted to hear that, only that piece, only, sir. Thank you.
For community partnership with our stakeholders or with like other organizations that we partner with in the community?
Yeah, other organizations, trying to help you meet your needs is what I was looking at. Thank you, sir.
So something I mentioned earlier when I took over, we had no money. And we only were being able to stay solvent based off of bailouts from, whether it's the COVID-era funding, or different organizations or donors that helped us make ends meet. So I'm very proud to say we're, for the first time ever, we are completely financially independent, which is fantastic. We've had great partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club. We, our school is inside the Boys and Girls Club. We have a great partnership during the daytime. They don't have any programs going on. They're an after-school program. So we go in there, and they have a beautiful facility of a great partnership. And Mike Worm and his crew have been absolutely critical to our success. And we could not be doing what we're doing today without their help and support. And they're an incredible organization in their own right. And the great thing is, we serve the same exact kids. Our demographic of who we're trying to reach are the same type of kids. So that's our biggest community partner, and it's something that's, we've looked forward to working with them for a very long time. And I mean, I can't say enough good things about the Boys and Girls Club, and Mike Worm and his group that have been just completely critical in our success.
I'll put one other plug in there, too. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Trustee Phoenix.
No, just to say that, thank you for identifying those community partners. And then maybe there's other partners out there you haven't yet. But I appreciate your energy and your vision and your commitment. Thank you.
I'll also add on the community outreach, the dinners that you have with all of your students and their families.
Yeah, I guess since I have the time, I'll tell you about this great, we talk about engaging with families and how we can actually do it. I mean, everyone wants to increase parent engagement. One thing in the past, our schools try to do is have like dad nights and these type of things. And something that we notice is no one is showing up. And I mean, some of the reason is, I mean, we would use incredible, it's an issue educators have. We like to use dense language. I don't know if it's to make us sound smarter, but we don't talk like normal folk. And it was an issue, because no one wants to come to their kid's school and look dumb in front of their kid's principal, their kid's teacher. And so we just had no engagement. So what I wanted to do is, let's remove anything about school. We're all in the business of building positive relationships. And what better way to do that than just have dinner together? So we just have dinner nights. We say, bring the whole family. And what we started doing on top of that is, I told all my staff, I'm like, I need you to bring your family too. Bring your mom, bring your dad, bring your, I bring my daughter, I bring my wife, I bring my own mom. And we sit down, and we have dinner. It really humanizes all of us, and it helps building that school culture that's so important to our school. And we do those every quarter, and it's been so successful, where every single event we have, more than half of our students and their families show up. It's an incredible, incredible success that we are so happy to continue doing. And also, for a lot of our families, it's just, I mean, they bring everyone. I have my students bring their, like, eight, nine siblings, and they all get dinner, and they get to sit down and have fun. We're trying to have events and put it on holidays to make it more fun. And they get to eat the same incredible lunch that our students get to eat, because we have an incredible lunch program and culinary program, which some of you guys have gotten to eat their food.
Thank you, President Smith. So nice to see you again, Principal Khan. I think where you got me crying was when you mentioned going to the middle schools. Because if we can grab kids at that level, I think we can do it. I know we can do it. We're going to get ahead of it. And I appreciate you having that insight to get those kids before it's too late. And I love your passion. I truly love your passion. And I can tell that you have love and compassion for your kids. And so I just thank you so much for what you're doing. And I know great things are going to be in store. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello. You look great in purple.
Thanks.
You really do.
I've got the next one if you want it.
I do. I look great in purple.
Everyone does.
I first want to say that I've been visiting Encompass for five years, and I have seen the change. It's been a slow, systematic change that I can see, I can feel, and it's been very comfortable. And thank you for that. The acronyms we educators use, I'm glad you've kind of worked on that, because nobody needs to go through that. We, JJ's made a list for the trustees of acronyms that I think is 15 pages long. That's how, and there's some missing. And you have a wonderful chef. I must admit, I'm one of those people that will eat his macaroni and cheese any day. I do have some important questions, and this is probably for our team. I am for the restarting of the charter. I wish there was a different way, but we've got to do what we've got to do. So I'll just kind of give them out. The diagnostic review, who does that? How does that look? The academic consultant, is that someone that Encompass hires to come in and consult? Number three, the default deadline, January 30th, 2026, I would really like to extend that, because we're going into the holiday season, and that is, to me, an unreasonable date if we really, truly want success. Thank you.
Of course. So in terms, I'll just take them one at a time, Dr. Dai. Yes. So in terms of the restart process and the diagnostic review, we have a diagnostic review that we typically use as a part of the school improvement plan process. They are welcome to utilize that, but do it at this point in the year. So that's something that happens with every school annually at the beginning of the year. And we would invite them to reset that now with this scope. We've also encouraged that they do a little bit of a deeper dive with that diagnostic review. So it's not just the diagnostic review, the needs assessment, and the root cause analysis, but you'll see stakeholder input as the anchor. And that's really us having a provocation around the community, the learning community around them, but teachers, staff, and chasing some of those folks that maybe don't respond to survey results. So we've discussed what that looks like with them. But that's why we have this stakeholder input portion in there. And that's something that they take on independently. So while we have a, something, a template that they can use, they're welcome to go above and beyond that. But our minimum expectation is that there is a needs assessment with their root cause analysis and stakeholder input. In terms of the academic consultant, that is something that they must procure independently. That can be something that's at cost or not. The reason that we left it open to not specify something local, for example, is they could decide after their needs assessment that they really want to focus on literacy. And maybe the, you know, best and brightest literacy specialist for charter schools independently exists perhaps in Washington DC. Maybe they have a virtual academic consultant that they're engaging with. So we want them to have the opportunity to kind of be broad in what their needs are, and then specific in how they want that consultant to fill those needs. But that is not something that we, as the district, would be providing for them. Can you remind me of your third question?
Default deadline.
Oh, the time, the default. So this is actually something that we discussed with them. So the restart process, it begins next semester. We're just saying that by January 30th, we want them to conduct the needs assessment now. If, if, you know, if you guys want to entertain a further deadline, that's okay. We just want to anchor them in having these resources to use as they do the recharge, the restart process. That's what it's intended to do, is guide that process.
So then to that, thank you. That helps clarify. I was kind of close-minded about that one. But so what is next then? They go, there's no doubt in my mind, they'll go through this. And you'll work with your trustees to make all this happen, and your staff, et cetera. Then what is next? What, when does the new charter become something that we bless?
Fantastic. You led us right to this next slide. So right now, the tentative deadline would be January 30th. Of course, this dais can move that deadline if you guys desire. But they would essentially meet the conditions by January 30th. And then they would get their application for restart to us by February 20th. And that's so that we have time to give them a thorough review. So the law requires that we give a thorough review, that we have an expedited process to give back to them. We would do that by March 20th. And then they would be preparing, using our feedback to make any edits that they might have in March leading into April. And then they would return to this dais. Our target date would be April 28th, where they would come before this board and present their recharter contract. And you guys would be able to approve, whether it's a yea or nay. And then they would be set to engage the next academic school year.
And I'm sorry, I did not look at that slide. I appreciate it. But I'm glad I asked.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I appreciate Trustee Nicolet's question about the timing. I actually had, I'm sorry.
And I do just want to say, on the deadline for the restart of the charter, we were, the reason, part of the reason we set these deadlines is because we would need to have a new charter in place for the start of the next school year. And so we were looking at when your board meetings are before the next school year starts, and also so that families are aware and understand. And as long as it is all approved, and they meet these conditions, they have that continuity. But if they don't meet these conditions, then they will know that they might need to start looking for another school. We don't anticipate that will happen. But under the law, they have to restart a new charter, and that needs to happen before the next school year.
All right. Thank you so much, Principal Khan and everyone. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
If I could just add one more thing, based off, if you do any type of, there's seven days to get out the communication to our families. I would ask if I could, because Thanksgiving is next week, and I want to also, that needs assessment and getting stakeholder input, I want to be able to also send that out at the same time, saying this is going out, the communication, and also, this is what we got to do. And we're looking for families and parents that want to come and talk to us. So I want to be able to send that all out at the same time, and have the highest response rate. And I think sending it out during Thanksgiving is not going to be the best route. So I'm asking if that can be switched to 14 days, to allow me to send it out on the Monday or Tuesday after we come back from Thanksgiving.
And that would be 14 calendar days?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't see a challenge with that extension, if you were to choose to do that.
Okay. We haven't gotten a motion, but I'll drop a hint that I would personally support that when we do get to making a motion, which could be as soon as right now, for anyone that would like to.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I do need a clarification on the date-specific information we just discussed.
Sure. So with the motion I see here, and again, anybody jump in, we see a motion before us, and then in the area that is related to stakeholder communication, I would make a slight change to that with the stakeholder communication, with the increase to 14 calendar days. And then I would just read the rest of the motion from there.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the restart of the Encompass Academy Charter School charter under a new charter contract, consistent with the conditions in the board report related to diagnostic review, academic consultant, stakeholder communication within 14 calendar days, and the default deadline.
I second.
All right. We have a motion by Trustee Nicolet. We have a second by Trustee Westlake. It is confirmed for the record that we have the increase to 14 calendar days for the stakeholder communication. Seeing no other lights on, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those pose nay, motion carries. Thank you so much, Principal Khan. And thank you.
I just really appreciate your guys' time. And we got a lot of work to do, but we got great systems. We got a lot of work we're going to do. And I appreciate your partnership and help with this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, team. That closes item 3.04. And now we will move on to item 3.05. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action for the Board of Trustees to terminate the charter contract or restart under a new charter contract with possible required conditions for Sierra Nevada Academy Charter School, Snacks, pursuant to Nevada Revised Statutes 388A.300, following three consecutive years of one-star performance on the Nevada School Performance Framework. This is an item for possible action. We again have before us the same team that we have invited before us already. And we're joined by the Chief Executive Officer, Dr. Kimberly Regan, who will be presenting on behalf of Snacks. And we're also very pleased to welcome Snacks Board President Melinda Whitney. And for those, just so you know, after this item, we will be taking a break. All right.
Thank you, Melinda Baker, Area Superintendent. And we are before you today regarding Sierra Nevada Academy Charter School, who has also earned three consecutive years of a one-star rating. The same explanations that Deputy Chief Montavo explained in our previous presentation apply to this particular scenario. So we are going to start with Dr. Davidson's review of their current performance data.
Thank you, Laura Davidson, for the record. So we wanted to again start with just providing some context about who Snacks serves in their K8. So as you can see up here, they last- So, as you can see up here, they last year had 251 students on count day, but served up to 277 students over the course of the year. Their transency rate is about 20%, which is on par with the district elementary schools on the whole. Down below, you can see some of their demographics as well. They are also serving 100% students who qualify for free and reduced-priced lunch, compared to 72% of district elementary schools. And then they serve just a slightly lower proportion of special education students than other WCSD elementary schools, and same with EL students. But for high-risk students, so students who have at least three of those indicators indicating risk for poor academic performance, they do have a much higher rate of students who are at that high-risk level.
And Dr. Davidson, since I offered this praise of Principal Khan, I also wanted to recognize Dr. Regan out there. Thank you so much. Okay. I was looking for where you were in the crowd. It was, he was wearing all purple, so it was a little easier to see him. But I want to offer you the same praise. It is clear that you don't just say that you are open to every student. You actually serve every student, so thank you so much.
Okay. So, schools that are K through eight or K through 12 are in a little bit of a unique situation with the Nevada School Performance Framework. They actually receive two separate star ratings, even though all of the grades are under the same building. So, they are allowed to select which grade levels fall in the middle school level and which fall in the elementary school level. But for all of these indicators, you'll see that we split them out for elementary versus their middle school, even though they're all in the same building. For the purposes of NSPF, only one of their schools, the elementary school level, is the one that has received three consecutive years of one-star rating. Their middle school has not reached that level. So, the elementary and middle school performance frameworks look almost identical to each other with just a few differences. It's majority based on standardized tests. So, in that first column, it's academic achievement. Those are proficiency rates on our three standardized tests, Smarter Balance, Science, but also the Nevada Alternative Assessment. And then they get double-counted for grade-three reading proficiency as well. Growth is the main driver of the elementary and middle school performance framework. That accounts for absolutely the majority of their star rating. So, not how, whether students are on grade level, but whether they're making growth towards or staying above grade level. So, that's what that middle indicator there is, the closing opportunity gaps. It's growth with students who are non-proficient. And then all of our levels have an English language growth measure, and then a chronic absenteeism measure. Middle school framework very similar, except they have two additional measures for eighth-grade core credit attainment and percentage of students with an academic learning plan in place, but are almost identical otherwise. So, this is SNAKES Elementary School. This is the one that has qualified for three one-star ratings consecutively under NRS. So, you can see their performance back to 2016, 17. I'll just point your direction over to the far-right-hand column and the colors there. It's indicating that in about, some of the measures, they're improving, and some of the measures, they're on the decline. Others are flat. The index score, you can see, has changed fairly dramatically since the pre-pandemic level of performance, where they're as high as a three-star status. But the last three years is where they got their one-star rating. You can also see some acronyms next to those ratings. Those are different designations. This is, they've had this past year, an ATSI designation. That's Additional Targeted Support and Improvement. That's an indicator that there's an achievement gap, so that one particular population at their school is scoring in the bottom 5% of the state. And for them, it's their free and reduced lunch population. You can see for them that their enrollment has changed a little bit. Part of that is that they moved their sixth grade up to their middle school in '21, '22, so that accounts for some of that enrollment change. But you can see, in general, their enrollment is, has declined. The middle school has, pre-pandemic, was largely at a three-star rating. No schools received one in '21, '22 because of the accountability waiver. And then they had two-star, two-star, and then this most recent year, they received a one-star status. So, you can see that those measures were largely on the decline in that far-right column. So, for some of these next slides, I'm going to just focus on the elementary school level because that is the one that met the criteria for three consecutive one-star ratings in a row. So, again, we want to make sure that we're comparing them to like schools in our district. So, on the left-hand side, it's SNAKES performance compared to other Title I elementary schools in Washoe County School District. You can see that they do tend to underperform some of the other Title I elementary schools in the district. On the right-hand side, we compare them just only to other one-star elementary schools in the district. And you can see that in some years, they're on par, other years just slightly below. I will note, you've probably seen in other board presentations that we pretty dramatically shrunk the number of one-star elementary schools that we have overall. So, just note that and size down on the far-right-hand side there. And then this is just showing again, kind of where SNAKES is landing compared to other one-star elementary schools in the three years that are counting for the NRS measure. This is just looking at some of the indicators. As you can see, about half the indicators have improved. Notable in the ELA adequate growth percentile measure, as well as the closing opportunity gap. The ELA growth there is where they gained a lot of those points. And then English learner growth on access, a pretty tremendous increase on that measure as well, as well as overall proficiency for ELAs. So, some nice movement in those, in that particular area. This is just looking at proficiency rates over time. Again, another comparison with other district Title I elementary schools and all district elementary schools. So, you can see that, again, the proficiency rates are a little bit lower for ELA math and science as well. This is the middle school data. Again, this is the middle school, didn't meet the criteria, but just showing that some of those indicators have declined. We saw them move from a two to a one-star, but two of the measures are on the upswing. So, as noted earlier, there is new language for exemptions that turn the shall into a may. And so, we did check for those with SNAKES Elementary School level. Again, that's the one that we're looking at tonight. And unfortunately, they did not meet either of the exemption criteria because of their overall index score didn't hit that 17, which is what's needed for at least the second one. So, for factors for consideration, certainly, there is some significant downward trending data, but not all of them. Not all of the indicators are on the downward trend, and some have, in fact, improved. And although there are some high-quality alternatives available, we saw some of the Title I elementary school performance and the district elementary school performance as a whole. Termination could disrupt student learning, so it should be entered into very cautiously, of course. And with that, I'll turn it over to Area Superintendent Baker.
Thank you, Dr. Davidson. We would recommend that the Board of Trustees also approve that Sierra Nevada Charter School pursue a new charter contract under a new charter. So, a new charter contract, excuse me. And what is unique about this circumstance is that the governance body and administration at SNAKES has actually been around for quite some time. They've been serving that learning community for several years. And they actually submitted a proposal to Washoe County School District with an action plan dictating some of the next steps that we actually collaborated about. And that's what you see before you today in terms of our recommendation. So, we would like them to conduct a diagnostic review to include that needs assessment, that root cause analysis, and stakeholder input. We want them to use that as their compass moving forward as they pursue the new charter process. But we also would like them to reconstitute a new governing body. And that's something that they had suggested in their proposal as well. But we're specifying that we would like them to have at least two new members, one that has expertise in academic improvement. And in accordance with NRS 388A, we also would want one new member with expertise in operations, finance, legal, and human resources. We do want them to, in addition to that, either obtain a new administrator that has expertise in academic improvement with a priority expertise in special education and human resources as well, or to procure an administrative mentor for the current administration and leadership. And again, we're wanting that to be the governing body that really dives in and harnesses that reset, the charter restart process. But that also really sets the plan in place to start off strong and to continue strong and to have that momentum. That's why those layers are in place. We also would like to see them obtain an academic consultant. And again, we're not specifying the type of academic consultant. Whereas with the administrative mentor, we're saying we want someone with some expertise in academic improvement. There, for the consultant, we really want them to use that needs assessment to dictate what type of expertise to bring on, onboard, and to also inform them around what types of governance body members might round them out well and balance their next steps. We would like for them to communicate this board's decision. We'll say within a 14-day calendar window, just because that makes sense in terms of the holidays. Excuse me. And we would like them to meet these deadlines. And I know this feels rigorous, but we would like for them to meet these deadlines by January 30th. And that date is something that we collaborated with them on. And again, that's to stabilize that the restart process is happening under this new leadership with these new resources, so that the new charter that comes before you in April is very well-refined and includes sort of the expertise that we're asking for here. So, with that, I would love to welcome Dr. Regan to the podium.
Welcome, Dr. Regan, and thank you so much for extending the opportunity to come visit SNAKES. I have not yet been able to, but I look forward to when we are able to do that. And I believe you extended that to everyone on the board. So, thank you so much. I did get to watch the wonderful piece that you had shared with Andy Garcia as well. So, that was really, really amazing.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. So, good afternoon, almost evening. For the record, I'm Dr. Kimberly Regan. I'm the CEO for Sierra Nevada Academy Charter School, also known as SNAKES. And then with me, I do have Melinda Whitney, who's the Chair of our Board and a 35-year veteran of Washoe County School District as a teacher. And she's in the back row back there. And then I also have Mark Gardberg with me, who is right behind me. And he's a school advisor for us. And I have additional staff members in the audience in case questions come up that they can help support, answer. President Smith, trustees, and Superintendent Ernst and staff, thank you for providing us with a few minutes to discuss SNAKES today. We're trying to be brief in less than 10 minutes. We're following Autumn, Principal Khan, so that's, we'll see. He is very charismatic, but I will say, I'm not sure, Trustee Mayberry. I'm Warriors fan. I don't know if that's more in your wheelhouse. Not Lakers, and I did see them play together, so. We want to start by emphasizing our appreciation to the Washoe County School District and the Charter School Monitoring Team, especially the Department of Curriculum Instruction and the Office of School Accountability Team, as they've been very supportive in this process. And we want to put upfront that we do concur with the, in agreement with the superintendent's recommendations, and have worked very collaboratively with Area Superintendent Baker and her team. We've had great spirit of collaboration and already had discussions on what the deep dive in data looks like and where we can go and opportunities to improve from here. And so, with that, we were very thankful for Trustee Nicolette to come out with 12 members of the Curriculum and Instruction Team members. At the same time, I will say, Trustee Nicolette has, Dr. Dai, has visited SNAKES several times over her terms, and we always love having her out. But this was the first time that the Curriculum and Instruction Department has been out to SNAKES since we've been in our new building. And so, we were very honored to have 12 people take time out during their day to come and see us and not only see that video, which we started off with, which gives you a five-minute overview of what the school model is, but actually walk in classrooms and see what you see in the video in real time, and then get to talk to staff and students about what is actually happening at the school. And so, we feel like that was very, an extraordinary investment of time and very powerful for both the Washoe County School District team as well as us. And then, as you mentioned, President Smith, that I sent that five-minute video, and I do invite everybody to please come out and see what we're doing at SNAKES at any time. We would love to have you. At the site visit, we had very positive and helpful feedback, but we know we're here today because of some of the hard truths that were portrayed in the data. What you won't hear is excuses or complacency, but instead continuing dedication for the transformation work we embarked on beginning the '24, '25 school year to address the NSPF star rating and academic progress that was noted. Over, just over a year ago, at the two-year mark of having a lower NSPF rating, we conducted a deep dive analysis at that time of the qualitative and quantitative data and looked at national school research and made significant changes to the post-NSPF, post-COVID NSPF star rating. And as one of my folks that I've learned from, that I am going to be trying to consult with under the agreement if we are awarded the restart, is A.J. Crabhill. And he's an American education reformist and has done a lot of work in the state of Nevada and worked with us under the LION Executive Leadership Program, which I had the benefit of being a part of a few years ago. And one of his sayings is, "Student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change." And so, we have taken a significant look at it. My staff back there can attest they're sick of me saying it because every problem they bring to me, I say, "Student outcomes don't change till adult behaviors change. What needs to change?" And so, it's really taken that mindset shift that we've had to look at what is happening from the, what students need, and then what is happening with the adults in our school, and how can we change that? And so, my former position in leadership at the school, I am a founder, founding member of the school. Going back to 1999, we started off in two churches, and we would set up classrooms because our building wasn't ready. And so, we would set up classrooms on Sunday nights in the two churches and then take them down on Friday afternoons. And that was a community effort with our staff and our families. And so, we really pioneered and paved the way for the charter movement, and we're very proud of that. And so, along the way, as we grew and expanded into a different site, we had another leader who was in charge of academics and another leader who was in charge of discipline. And when we looked at the two-year of star ratings, we knew, and the leader knew, that it was time for us to move into separate directions. And so, at that time, I had formerly been working more on the budget, the finance, the accountability side, the goal-setting, the big-picture marketing, PR, things like that. And that person was in charge of more of the daily operations instruction side. And so, as we transitioned out in discussions with our board, we decided that I would take over the instructional role as well. And so, in the beginning, the '24, '25 school year, I oversaw both. And then we had a veteran teacher who was on-site, who'd been there at SNAKES for 14 years, so really knew the model, really embraced the model. And that person came on as our associate director to be more of a teacher, coach, and mentor and look at what is happening within the classroom and provide those supports necessary. And the person who was in charge of discipline also has left the school. And so, we feel like, under the leadership component of the school transformation, we've already started that work before we were required to by law because we knew what needed to happen to transform the school. At the same time, as we knew this transition was occurring, I went into a staff meeting with the teachers, and I actually asked, and I shared this with Melinda. I asked the staff what the mission of the school was, and I got blank faces. And I asked staff what the model was, and I got blank faces. And so, we knew this is a serious problem. We're not going to get the student outcomes we want if we don't change these adult behaviors. And so, we re-interviewed all of the staff and ended up with about 10% of our staff returning either by their decision, by laying out, "These are the expectations moving forward. This is the direction we're going. Get on the train or get off. Your choice." And so, some folks decided that it wasn't for them, that the accountability we're bringing to the table wasn't for them. And some folks decided that they wanted to stay. And then through the process, we talked about the pieces that would be there for everybody to be accountable to implement the mission and the model. And those folks were able to stay and even take on teacher leader roles within the school or leadership roles within the school. And so, I know Principal Khan has an inspiring leadership story, so I made a note, "Share your leadership story." For me, I was also an at-risk student, and I have a story about my second-grade teacher. And I said, we were homeless at times, didn't have a place to live in transition, living with grandparents, cousins, moving one year. I think I moved seven schools in one year. And so, extreme poverty, food stamps, same, similar kind of story. So, I think it's interesting that charter school leaders serving at-risk kids come from at-risk backgrounds. But for me, my second-grade teacher made all the difference in the world to me. We published books within the classroom. We actually had the choice model in the classroom that we have at SNAKES today. And when I published my book, she would highlight it. She put it in the school, the classroom library. She, you know, read it to the class. I can still remember how it felt, what it looked like, the pictures that I had drawn inside of it. And she told me I was going to grow up and be an author someday. And I will tell you what, she was right. And so, I actually wrote my memoir, which is called Unbroken. And so I actually wrote my memoir, which is called Unbroken Road to Freedom, Overcoming Abuse, Poverty, and Oppression: Finding Strength to Fight When Life Beats You Down. And that's my homeless-to-Harvard story because I have gone to Harvard. I do have the leadership background and knowledge. And so I think I bring a lot of longevity, but I also bring a lot of inspiration to the table in doing this transformation work. I will disclose that I'm past my 30 years, but I so believe in this work. And I'm so committed to the school we started and my students and my families and my staff and the hard work that we're doing that I couldn't ethically step away until I know where we need to be. And I will say, because I see you tearing up a little bit, Autumn does come to our school. He's one of the people who comes to our school and talks to our eighth graders. So with that, you may know about our school model because it's in the video that I shared. But just to highlight really quickly, because I am passionate about it, our model is currently being considered by an ed tech company for an innovation that we've recently implemented, which is the interactive choice boards. And our mission is to provide for personalized learning through choice and play. And so what that means is instead of having a more traditional setting where a teacher may provide a lot of direct instruction to the whole group, every classroom is designed like a discovery museum. And within that discovery museum setting, there are standards-based learning centers where, that are differentiated and individualized for students' needs and interests. And students use this interactive choice board to select which centers they go to and when. And teachers assign must-dos and can-dos. Must-dos means that's an absolute, they have to get through them. And then the can-dos are, you can do this when you're finished. You know, teachers have different rules to address those, but you have your options. And so they go to this choice board, and in the video, you'll see the choice board. And they select their name, then they select which center they want to go to. And in behind the scenes, teachers can say, "Three students are allowed in this center. Five students are allowed in this center." And so it regulates, manages what's happening in classroom traffic and it becomes a management system. And so what happens when students are now working in these centers? The system is tracking behind the scenes where students are attending. So we can look at data behind the scene by center or by student. And so we can now look at and have conversations with students and families about how students are making choices. So are they, if say kindergarten has to get through five must-dos in a week in language arts and then five later on in math, whenever they do those blocks of time. And so we can now look at, do students choose to spread out their five must-dos throughout the week? Do they do them all at the beginning of the week? Or do they wait and procrastinate and they can't get there, right? And so we actually did, one of our teachers did a master's thesis on this and found out that 74% of students could, five-year-old students, could get through the required must-dos without any teacher intervention at all. And so now we can take that opportunity to have those conversations with students as well as coach them, "What other decisions could you make? How can we help you? Have you tried this strategy?" And so now we're building metacognition, executive functioning, agency, self-regulation, building brain neuroplasty and brain development. And so the model that we use is based on the science of hope, the science of learning, as well as developmental learning theories. So we're looking at developmentally appropriate practice. The science of hope involves, you have to have a sense of belonging, engagement, and hope in order for learning to occur. And so because we work with that high-risk population, we really have to ensure that we are meeting those needs of students and building those soft skills, non-cognitive skills, in order for students to truly learn. And I think that we've made a lot of progress in the past year, which I know some of the data looks doom and gloom, but just to look at some of the positives in the data, we have had some, as Autumn mentioned, we've had some shifts in changing our school culture and mindset because not only implementing the school mission and model was important, but we also moved to focusing our efforts on changing school culture and climate and mindset, PBIS, social-emotional learning, trauma-informed practices, restorative justice, family engagement, and decreasing discipline incidents. And so our suspensions from '23-'24 in, with our leadership change and the practices that we were ensuring were in place, looking at student outcomes first, to '24-'25 went from 109 suspensions to 25. That's a 77% decrease. That's not reflected on an NSPF because we don't have data like that on the NSPF. And so I just wanted to mention that because that data point is actually less than the pre-COVID number in 2018-19 when we were a three-star school. So our discipline issues this past year were less than when we were a three-star school. So I think that's one point that shows we're on the progress to getting to where we need to be. And then our other efforts focused on specifically English language arts and English language learners. And so those were all, those were the main priorities outlined in our school improvement plan. I think they called it School Performance Plan last year. But those were the points that we focused on and put all of our energy there. And so if you know Tony Robbins, his saying that I love is, "Where focus goes, energy flows," right? And so we had, in every single area of ELA, in elementary and in middle school, we had increases. And then we had increases in ELL. So it shows where our focus goes, the energy flows. ELA adequate growth percentile increased from 24 to 35.2%. ELA prior non-proficient met adequate growth percentile increased from 23 to 31%. Access WEDA adequate growth percentile increased from 8.3 to 37.5, which is an 88% increase in the points that changed. And three out of our 16 elementary students, or 19% of students, scored high enough on all areas of the WEDA and access criteria to exit ELL services. And that's the first time for our school ever. And so I think that just goes to show you, like, we are putting the practices in place. There is still so much work to do. This year's school improvement plan is looking at, now we have to maintain what we just did. And now we need to address mathematics, science, and chronic absenteeism. And I believe our team is well on the way to get there. And we are open to more suggestions. We're asking Area Superintendent Baker to give us any additional feedback. And we are looking at national consultants that can help us to get to where we need to be. Because to me, that's very exciting to be able to learn from the best. And we have this opportunity, we were able to collaborate on having this opportunity to learn and grow as a school and make sure that our students and families are still served. I do believe that the NSPF, while I believe that NSPF doesn't portray our full Snacks story, nor highlight all the areas of our growth, but I understand that the rating doesn't meet your expectations, the state expectations, or our standards, my personal standards for the school and the students. As noted by school district staff, national research reports that real school improvement and turnaround requires multi-year commitments to complex and persistent efforts, including high-quality instruction, high-intensity tutoring, extended learning time, and strategies to address student needs that will yield with time, yield results with time. For those who don't know, Snacks is Nevada's oldest and first K-38 charter school. We began in 1999, as I mentioned. So that's 27 years being invested in the North Valley's community of Washoe County School District. We have alumni that are employed in tech companies, medical and engineering fields, electrician in construction trades, education, some are actually working at Snacks, government, and trustee Woodley, the armed forces, to name a few. We also have third-generation students attending Snacks, which makes me a grand, they're my grand, I call them my grand students. So I'm kind of dating myself there, but this, but I think this is a true testament. This is the greatest gift we can get back from our school community is to have students who grew up and have children bring their children back to attend our school because they enjoyed the experience that they had there. And it was impactful and made a difference in their lives. I won't pretend that the last few years have been easy. Post-COVID-19, Snacks was in transition. And before COVID, we were not Title I. Coming back from COVID, year '22-'23, we became Title I and have 100% free reduced lunch. And then, as noted, Snacks has 58% more high-at-risk students than Washoe County School District, elementary schools in general. And with that high-at-risk population, you know, we're working with students to really be able to come to school and embrace learning. And, you know, we have some of the challenging students who come to school and I have this group of boys at school, right, that are, that come to school. And, and when they started, they were very rambunctious in wanting to fight the rules and not wanting to pay attention or test the waters or whatever it is. And we really have taught our staff to build those relationships. And I will say, those are the first boys that when we're setting up our Harvest Festival outside, they're the first ones to build the Harvest Festival booths when we're getting ready to go to our Barnes &amp; Noble Authors' debut because we do make every single one of our students become a published author so they can have the same experience that I had in second grade. And we've been doing that for 20 years. And every student publishes their book. And they don't get to see it when it's published. We do our internal Caldecott medals. We take it to Barnes &amp; Noble and we do an author signing. They have a table, they sign in front of a photographer and all of their family and friends. And they get cheered on. And many of our students still have their books and love that. And I've had a few that are in high school or beyond that say, "I am going to write that book someday." And so I think we are building that culture of literacy. And, and back to those boys, like, they're the first ones to say, "Can I help set up? Can I come early? Can I, you know, be part of this?" Because they're just looking for opportunities to be part of the school. And so some of the things that I've talked about aren't reflected on the NSPF, but I'm confident that if we're given the opportunity to restart, that we are making gains. We're moving in the right direction. And we know it's a lot of work and we know we'll do better. I think that the recommendation is reasonable, fair, and in the best interest of Washoe County School District and Snacks students and families. And we have collaborated with Area Superintendent Baker and just really appreciate her insight and advice, off-the-record advice, I guess, on, on what we need to do to get to where we need to be. With the recommendations, we've already begun our diagnostic review, done a deep dive assessments. We're looking at root cause analyses. And just, I mean, I've been up since 2:00 this morning because we found out yesterday I was presenting. So I'm like, "What am I presenting on? I don't even know." But looking at the data, and finally, because we did try to do this before, but with the internet breach with the state, we weren't able to access the NSPF scores for all the other schools. And so we're actually looking at a deep dive at the area schools around us to look at which schools, because when we were here with you last year getting our charter, we were one of the highest-ranked Title I schools in our area. And some of those schools have surpassed us now. And so we're like, "Wait, what are they doing?" And so part of our deep dive that I talked about with Melinda is to go and see those schools and see if I can get some advice and some strategies from them as part of our diagnostic review. And then we're already talking to folks approaching Assistant Superintendent in another Nevada district and then several other prospects to see if they will join our board. And then with academic improvement mentors, we're really looking at, I have, I mean, if I could get A.J. Crabhill, I will, and I don't know if he'll do it, but we are looking at, you know, people who have experience with Title I schools and turnaround. That's, I think, our biggest need and looking at our special populations. ELL, special education, to make sure that we're serving those special populations. I mean, as I mentioned, I come from an at-risk background and I want to see every single one of our students get to Harvard like I did. And if that's their path and that's their choice. And so I thank you for all of your time. And I am here for any questions that I could answer. And I really appreciate your support.
Thank you so much, Dr. Reagan. That was incredible. And I think I speak for all of us, you need to invite us to that book signing event. So please send an email through Rochelle or...
Do we have the date? It's March. Do you remember?
It's okay if you don't.
It is in March. I know it's in March.
Just please send that along to us. Jennifer Caldwell handles all those engagements for us. I'm sure that Area Superintendent Baker and Rochelle will send that along because I have a feeling that you're going to have an even bigger cheering squad coming from this board. Just also, so you mentioned it, and I'm so glad you did, that you are the oldest charter. And so we appreciate that very much. And thank you for sharing your personal story with your background because I know that that can be hard, but I hear the empowerment in your voice from that. And so just really, really well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, President Smith. I do have a quick question about the recommendation. But before that, I just want to thank you. And I know that Principal Khan already had to leave. But the, as you know, being the, one of the original charter schools in Nevada, the purpose of a charter school is to serve a niche. And, see, now you made me get all emotional. Many of you know that I did personally have to move my own children to a charter school after we had a niche need. And so I just want to thank you and did know what President Smith said for serving that niche and being committed to serving that niche. And I really, really appreciate that. So my question, however, is on the requirement for the governing body. So it does sound like you already have kind of an idea of at least one person. But filling board members is, as a director of a nonprofit and my other life, my other part of my life, it's not easy. And with the holidays coming up, I am a little concerned about that requirement being, need to be complete by January 30th. And I'm just wondering what the team's thoughts are on that and where they're at with that. Because while it sounds like you've already done a lot of work on some of the other pieces, obtaining a new administration and/or a mentor and the governing body piece feel like things that take a lot of time.
I'm going to let you speak first because it was in your original proposal. And then I'll be happy to jump in.
Yes. I mean, frankly, it's my worst nightmare. I mean, it is hard.
Same. We can have coffee about that another time. Yes.
Right. You're asking people to be committed and it's a serious commitment. And so, I mean, I commend all of you because you're here every week doing this and all the work in between. And so our conversation was that we have five existing board members now and two of them have expressed interest. And Melinda in the back being one of them, she's been with the school for 20 years. And another one of our board members is a parent and consultant for us for special ed and then later joined the board. So she's been with us for 27 years. Both of them bring a wealth of information and love for the school and support for the school. They've both expressed potential interest in being able to retire at some point. We keep telling them no. So we did have conversations about adding two additional members if, and/or possibly retiring another member. So it's not a replacement in a negative sense. It's, it could be a transition.
And that wasn't entirely, that's not entirely what I meant. I meant, is that a realistic timeline?
Oh.
To, to have two new members of your board in place by the end of January? I'm concerned for that being in your timeline for that. I think the other things are really, make a lot of sense to be done by January 30th. I'm just wondering if maybe that doesn't seem like, maybe there's a process started, but maybe you don't have commitments in place. Because again, we're about to start the holiday season and people responding to emails might be even more difficult. So I'm concerned of putting you in a position where you have this, this, anytime you're recruiting board members, you're thinking, "These people, they're so excited to be a part of what we're doing and they're going to get back to us." And, and then they don't. And I just don't want you to be in a position where you're stuck and you're like, "That's the one thing that didn't happen."
Right.
So...
I would appreciate more time if you can grant that.
That is my, so, so I will refer...
But I was also trying to be accommodating, you know, and show that we'll do whatever we have to. But that would definitely relieve some pressure.
I'm, I think that we are okay with the timeline. I do want to note that in accordance with NRS 388A, we, you know, there are some unfilled specifications that are not in place right now that are required by law. So while I think I will trust your judgment and extending that timeline, it is something that needs to be swift just to make their current board whole. Because right now, we're not all the way in compliance. But I, but I'm happy to...
So, so I guess, I guess what I'm sort of throwing out there is knowing the timeline. Do we have the timeline? the timeline, do we have the timeline slide? Is that the same appendix slide? I, I'm wondering if by January 30th that there's some evidence that that process has started and some, some like physical reach-out evidence of, of starting that process, but then that we have, we have some commitments by the time that they come before the board again. I, I'm wondering if, if, and, and I'm just throwing it out there to see if that's something that people feel comfortable with, because I am with you that they have to be following the NRS. That's important, but it's a, it's a process to get, to find the right people who are going to commit.
How does February 20th sound? I mean...
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm hesitant on this.
Thank you. I, I want to say that I understand, and that's why I asked for some additional time for Encompass. So I cannot support this because this is, this is an equality factor for me, and we've, we've been told that there's law behind it. And I get it. And we had to decline for a request I had for Encompass that I thought made sense, and I think this makes sense, but I think we need to equalize this.
They, and, and in fairness, they did not have this requirement at Encompass, but I, I see what you're saying in general.
But they had, can I just, as a discussion point, they have to find other things that could be equally difficult.
Okay. Fair.
Well, we didn't get to that point with Encompass, though, because they didn't feel that was a challenge that they couldn't reach. They didn't, they didn't feel, I don't think, if I was not hearing right, but I don't think Encompass felt that was a goal that was unattainable, so we really didn't have to even go there, did we?
Um, I, well, it's, it's a different item, and I certainly don't want to speak to Principal Khan, but what I will say in my own conversations with him is that they recognize our role as the sponsor here, our adherence to the law, and, you know, I would argue, they will certainly agree to it because they understand that this is the process they must follow. And so they, they committed themselves to making it work, with the exception of the suggestion around communication. So in this regard, I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna support the statement from Trustee Nicolet, only because there are some really strict date timelines here, and it worries me to have us as the sponsor trip up those legal requirements. But I, in spirit, agree with you, agree with you. And so I, I please take that with no disrespect, Dr. Regan, at all.
No, not at all. I mean, we'll comply with whatever we need to comply with.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Thank you, President Smith. Yeah, Dr. Regan, thank you for all that you do. I, I, it's really refreshing to hear that you recognize there are some challenges and that you're not sugarcoating anything. I, I appreciate that very much. I certainly support Dr. Nicolet's comments, too. I support the staff's recommendations. Only question I have for you, given that you, earlier you acknowledged that you, you have your 30 years, hopefully you'll stick around a little longer, do you have any succession plan for your replacement, should that we continue to be successful with Snacks? Thank you.
Um, my first goal is to get to where we're at the point of stability and, and success to where we need to be. And then, once that decision is made, I guess we'll have a, a succession plan, but I'm not a dropout person, so... There'll be at least a six month, I have to give hers at least six months, so there'll be at least a six months plan so that we can move forward with succession.
Um, we're going to go to Trustee Phoenix here in just a minute, but I, I do actually want to point out, Vice President Mayberry, that was a very good catch, and you've obviously been a cornerstone of the success for the school. So while not a requirement, to Trustee Hall's point, the restart, should we achieve that, would be for six years, and so succession planning is probably something that you're thinking about, unless you want to get to 40 years.
Yeah, no. No, thank you.
Which, which, well, hey, I mean, we're, we're always encouraging our employees to stay, but, um, Trustee Phoenix.
Uh, yes, thank you. Just to kind of wrap this up here, the one thing that, taken from our so-called playbook here at WCSD, you've heard it before, about the five-star schools and their success, and it may not be for your population, however, looking at the relationships, the connections that trust in having those resources is what makes them successful. And I just wanted to just comment on that, not, not respond. I just wondered, can I put that in your playbook and, and find a way that you can get a win over here? And that's just all, really all I would want to put out there so that you heard what is being successful here in the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no card for this item.
All right, so we'll bring it back here. Um, so Dr. Regan, I will ask, what we did extend with the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, we did extend to Encompass an extension up to 14 days with relation exclusively to the stakeholder communication piece. Is that an extension you are interested in as well?
I'm sure we have a draft already, but...
If you don't need it, I'm not pushing it on you. I just want to make sure. Okay, okay, very good.
Because as drafts go...
Very, very good.
I go through and re-change things, so...
And to everyone's point, and since that point for Encompass was made in recognition of the federal holiday, that is across the board for anyone. It's not unique to Encompass, so I wanted to make sure to offer that. So for whoever takes the motion, if someone is so inclined, I will ask that when you state the portion around stakeholder communication, to also add with an increase to 14 days and then continue the rest of the motion from there. And if anyone is so inclined, I will entertain a motion.
I would be happy to make that motion. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the restart of the Sierra Nevada Academy Charter School Snacks charter under a new charter contract consistent with conditions in the board report related to diagnostic review, the governing body, administration, stakeholder communication to be increased to 14 calendar days, and academic consultant and the default deadline.
I'll second that, madam.
All right, so we have a motion by Trustee Nicolet. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. All right, everyone, it is 4:39 PM, so I'm going to go ahead and call a recess, ideally for a tight 10, everyone. We'll come on back and keep going. Thank you.
Yep, I just wanted to check trustee Phoenix, do we have you?
Yes ma'am.
All right, all right. Okay, everyone. Let's start making our way back in because I'm going to hit this gavel. And we're going to keep on keeping on. Oh no! All right, all right. All right. It is 4:53 PM on this Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, and I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Before this break, we had just closed item 3.05, and now we are opening item 3.06, our next of the upcoming two items. This is the presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the proposed revision of Board Policy 7100, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities, to remove unnecessary verbiage, provide clarity, and ensure consistency in formatting and initiation of the 13-day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. And I also want to note that the number of the board policy was incorrectly listed in the title as 7100, it should be 7110. The name of the policy, however, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities, is correct, so that is just a small change. We have with us here our Chief Communications and Public Relations Officer, Michelle Anderson, and our Chief Operations Officer, Adam Cersei, welcome.
Thank you President Smith, Trustees Superintendent Ertz, Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications and Public Relations Officer, and with me is, I don't know if he wants to introduce himself or just sit there?
You got it.
Adam Cersei, our Chief Operations Officer. So I can go through everything pretty much line by line, but I do want to highlight a couple important things, and I apologize, we made some changes before the board meeting so that the board was easily able to see what was originally provided in their supporting material. We also have highlighted in yellow some changes, and those were some clarifications with us repurposing schools. We wanted to make sure we are very clear in our policy that outlined that. So to start, the changes that are being recommended, remove any unnecessary verbiage, provide some clarifying language, ensure some consistency in formatting for ease of use and understanding for anybody who's looking up our policies, and align with what the board approved on August 26, 2025, when we were discussing the activation of the school naming committee. So you'll notice up at the top, we added the definitions to clearly outline what school name enhancement meant. We then, under number two, we included verbiage to provide clarity that public input shall be solicited for new schools, school rebuilds with changes in grade configurations. And I do want to say before, if the board approved, we go out for a 13-day, I would like to also remove or function. In speaking with the Office of General Counsel, we found that when we say "or function," that could mean varying things to different people, so we wanted to omit that language. The next few changes are formatting changes. And then if you look under number three, I think this is where the majority of the changes are occurring. We specifically outlined that the committee makes recommendations to the board under the following circumstances: For a new school built on a new site; For a school that is rebuilt on an existing site with changes to grade configuration, and again, we're striking that function so to not cause confusion; For a school that is rebuilt on a nearby site with changes to grade configuration. We also included how the committee does not make recommendations to the board under the following circumstances: For a school that is rebuilt on an existing school site with no changes to grade configuration, again, striking function as the current name remains; For a school that is rebuilt on a nearby site within the same geographical community without changes to grade configuration, the current name shall remain the same. And then we added, for a school that is closed and repurposed for district use, we would strike "and" because we don't think that word is actually needed, that was my typo on that, the current name shall remain. This is in alignment with how the board has spoken about namesakes and honoring the legacy of people that have been tied to a school in that community. The next several strikeouts are to remove duplicate language and provide some clarity since information is included under school naming categories. And on page four, you'll notice, we added the lowercase "e" as we felt this was important to help with the process. And it's, the school naming committee may adopt a list of previous considered names to be automatically considered as semifinalists for future schools. Because we felt, again, that helps honor some legacy and that could be provided for public input. That concludes the recommendations, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I think you've done a really great job with this, and I want to say thank you very, very much. I know that this was one of the things that trustee Hall and I had brought forward. I like the policy just the way that it is, I support it. Here's a question though. So, we know that the schools that may discontinue in their original function with the consolidations that we're contemplating, we may not know the destiny of those sites for a while. So, in a situation where a school that is no longer continuing on in its original purpose, we don't know if it'll stay within the district in an educational use or district use, or if it may become something that we work on with a partnership in the community. When we know what happens with that school, this board, under this policy, would be able to then say, okay, this name, this namesake in particular, this building is no longer going to continue on within service to the district, this board, or anyone on the board, would then be able to make a recommendation or take a vote, put it on the agenda, to continue that name at another school, either with a similar grade configuration or connection to the community, so that name can actually live on. And I think that fits directly within this policy, the way you already have it written. I just wanted to make sure that my understanding is correct, because it says that the Board of Trustees makes the decision on any parts of a school.
That is correct. And then that also, I think, on page four, I think it specifically addresses that, where we say the naming committee may adopt a lift of previously considered names. So I think that coincides with that as well, but yes, it would come to the board for those approvals.
Perfect, okay. So what I love about that is because my concern has always been protecting the namesake and the community. A board before us, a community before us, very lovingly chose a name. And I'm not saying geographical names don't matter, because they certainly do, but a name of a person is really a legacy. And I really appreciate this with the board policy, and I'll ask that when the naming committee does stand up, in the instructions that the liaison that the team gives to the community members, that they know that the board will have that opportunity, once we know the destiny of those school sites, to carry those names forward somewhere else. Because what I want to avoid is it turning into whose name. And it could become a battle of legacies, and I really don't want that, at least, I'm just speaking for myself. For example, with the new elementary school being built in the Smith Ridge area, it is my hope, that's going to be a school in my district, that the community chooses a name that they want for this school, and it not turn into a battle of legacies with names. Because this board will do its work to protect those legacies in future decisions, and just so that they know that, and then hopefully, we can eliminate or neutralize any of those arguments about it should just be named for this person or that person, and that would be incredibly difficult. But I believe that this policy meets that needs, and that's just my one ask, that that committee understand that we will do that work at a later time. So, do we feel good on that?
Absolutely. I'm the chief that represents the naming committee, even though this policy doesn't fall underneath my purview, it's under the superintendent's office, but I work as that liaison, I'll make sure that is very clear to the committee when we assemble them. And just for everybody's knowledge, we will be looking at that after the holidays, trying to recruit for committee members, right now would be difficult, and we want to make sure that's aligned in the spring, and I will be working with, obviously, Mr. Cersei and his team, so that we can be aligned with zoning.
I just, thank you, thank you so much. I know when this first came up, there were obviously many valid perspectives, but I really appreciate that you dig deep, you heard what we were asking for, certainly what I was asking for, and delivered these revisions. So thank you, thank you very much. Seeing no other lights on, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, then I'll bring it back to this board.
I'm happy to make the, I think I was the one that opened this beep on it here, so I'll do it. Thank you for this incredible work, I know how much went into this, a lot of conversations, and I think we really, I think this really landed on where we need to be to ensure that we're protecting those legacies, but also giving communities an opportunity to name our new schools. So, here we go. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision, is this the right name in here now, number, sorry, I'm just double checking, to a board policy 7110, Naming of Schools and Other District Facilities, and initiates a 13-day public review and comment period.
Hi, second. I had to jump in there. All right. Since I was the other bee in the bonnet. We have a motion by trustee Hall, we have a second by President Smith, seeing no lights on, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right, team, that closes item 3.06, and we move on now to item 3.07. This is the public hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve the change of use in accordance with Washoe County School District Administrative Regulation 7087 and Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 393, for the following: Roger Corbett Elementary School and Veterans Memorial Elementary School, effective beginning the 2027-28 school year; and Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School and Smith Ridge Elementary School, effective beginning the 2028-29 school year. This is an item for possible action. And we welcome with us our Chief Facilities Management Officer, Tammy Zimmerman. Welcome Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you President Smith, Trustees Superintendent Ertz. So tonight, staff is here asking for the approval of the change of use per the Admin Reg 7087 for Roger Corbett Veterans Elementary, Smith Ridge Elementary, and Corbett, Edward S. Dodson Elementary, sorry. These were all depicted in the facility modernization plan, and we're following through on that process with this plan. These recommended changes follow through on some long-term planning for these sites, as well as some of the facility modernization plans for adjacent sites. For instance, the elementary school adjacent to the Smith Ridge with the rebuilding, and we're talking about design currently, we're talking about, and bidding currently, the Echo Loader plans for rebuilding on that property adjacent to it, and the modernization of Libby Booths. So, along with these changes, there will be other changes that bring additional opportunities to students and their educational outcomes. And so tonight, we're asking that you approve this, so that the staff can then start working on the repurposing for these school sites in conjunction with Board Policy 7086. So with that, if you had any questions, I'd be willing to answer those.
Thank you President Smith, Chief Zimmerman. It's not necessarily a question. I guess it's a comment. In the repurposing, well, first of all, I know there's been some angst in the community that some of these schools weren't set for closure until like 39, 2039, way off in the future. And I know, after talking to district staff, that we're not moving this up to cause any angst or stress, but we're trying to be proactive and get ahead of this, and make sure that we are using WC1 as it was intended to improve the schools in the community and to serve the students. So, I just, I did want to say that, because like I said, there has been the angst out there. The other thing that I just, I want to throw out there, on the repurposing, and I know we've talked about this before, like pre-K schools, things of that nature, but I'm hoping we're looking internally and externally. And internally, I know our JROTC program, they're always looking for places where they can do their robotics and their drone practices and their air gun practices for competitions. And I'm sure there's many other internal needs for different programs that we have. So, I'm hoping we're kind of looking at that, and maybe not just for specifically like JROTC, but maybe can be used by two or three needs inside the district, so that everyone has a place for perfection and to train and do those things. And then externally, I know there was a lot of, I received a lot of communication on our veterans. So, I think if we can kind of look to others in the community that have served not just Nevadans, but served our country, things like that, needs for early childhood care, places for children to go and have support, and places of stability, and families, and families, I think that would be in greater service to our community if we're looking at all of those needs internally and externally. Thank you.
Thank you President Smith. I just, I wanted to bring attention to the attachment that came along with this. I know it doesn't have a presentation, but I really, really appreciate the background on each of the buildings, as well as the description of every communication that has gone out to the school, to the community. I know that that's a conversation we've had several times, so I really appreciate you guys taking the time to give us that background and history, because we get a lot of feedback, and a couple of these schools are my schools, and so I really appreciate having this very handy guide to be able to say, you know, how did this, how did this communication work and what didn't work, so that we can continue to improve our communication? And as, just a side note, I've been a part of the FMP for a really long time, and I really appreciate the refocus on one specific vertical that will really allow us to improve an entire region, rather than the spottiness that we kind of originally planned. This is really allowing us to completely invest in a whole region of our community. And so, I know, I hear your point, that we, this is some change of dates, but I think the purpose behind it allows us to completely invest in a community that, if you look at the dates of some of these schools, hasn't been invested in generations. And so, it's pretty exciting, so thank you for all of that detail that I know took a lot of time to put into it, so I just wanted to thank you for that. I don't actually have a question, I just wanted to shout that out.
You just wanted that. You and me.
Thank you so much for that, I appreciate all those comments. Also, Veterans Elementary School is within District D, I share it with Dr. Dai, and I know that the staff is already taking to heart a lot of the community feedback we're hearing about the representation to the armed forces, so.
I do, yes, thank you. I do have a question. Please remind me, the last meeting, we voted to hire a company to help us with exactly what my trustee Colleen Westlake was talking about, what's their name?
Correct, we hired On Strategy.
Thank you. And have they already begun?
They've already begun, they've had meetings with us and staff, and we will continue to have meetings, and then meet with the board, and have those iterative processes that we talked about.
Thank you, thank you for that reminder.
All right, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
Joseph Pizarro.
Welcome, Principal Pizarro. It's very good to see you. I know you're going to introduce yourself, but the proud principal of Roger Corbett Elementary School.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm here to voice my personal views regarding the proposal to close Corbett Elementary and repurpose the building and rezone the area. And so, I work, as you know, as the principal of Corbett Elementary and it's truly an honor and a privilege. It's the sort of school that immediately gets into your heart, so I'm in my second year there. But I've worked in the broader area a bit longer, about six years. First as the Assistant Principal at Libby Booth, which is part of the proposal, and then as a principal. Life took me to the East Coast, but I found my way back.
Yay.
And I'm glad to be back. But I want you to know when I came back, I targeted Corbett. I wanted Corbett Elementary and it was already in the zeitgeist that this may be part of the plan. And so, knowing that, I'll be just absolutely honest. In my perfect world, we'd be erecting a brand-new Corbett Elementary in the adjacent field, but we don't own that land. It's a joint-use agreement with the city of Reno. Sometimes, the hard thing, or the right thing, is the hard thing. And our students deserve the best. I say this with pride. I'm genuinely proud to work for a county that's turning the WCSD flow towards the more established neighborhoods and doing so with some pre-thought and intention. Rezoning students who have experienced a lot of change in their life is a big impact, changing schools on them. That's why we have the McKinney-Vento Act. That's why we have the similar protections for students in the foster care system. So, I'm here to say, as much as it pains me to think of Roger Corbett ending, you know, those emotions are very real and I'm not going to pretend that they don't exist. I know this is right. I know it's the right move for our students to get the zoning right the first time, to invest in the area more broadly with a comprehensive plan. And so, my main message today is we're on the upswing at Corbett. Yes, our star rating took a hit last year, but if I could brag on our team, we cut absenteeism, chronic absenteeism by a lot. We're trending more than 10% lower than we were this time last year. And the average student at Corbett actually grew 0.4 more years in reading. So, what happened? Well, we took a hit in fourth, fifth grade growth in a very particular way that I am now very focused on, learning how everything works. So, you can expect some results from Corbett this year. And that's my final point here in the last few seconds is what we're building at Corbett with teacher clarity, building thinking, classrooms, all this driving that we're doing. I'm committed that the final chapter in this storied place, if it is to be next year, will be its best and the best instruction that you'll see at Corbett will likely be, not the final day, let's be honest, but the day before the final day of that final year. And so, thanks for making the hard choices for our students.
Thank you so much, Principal Pizarro. We really appreciate that. Very, very proud of the work you're doing, too.
The board received emails from Pamela Baker and Pablo Nava Duran related to this item.
All right, Vice President Mayberry?
I'm ready to entertain a motion, if you are. Board of Trustees approves change of use in accordance with Administrative Regulation 7087 and Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 393, for the following: Roger Corbett Elementary School and Veterans Memorial Elementary School, effective beginning the 2027-28 school year; and Edwin S. Dodson Elementary School and Smith Ridge Elementary School, effective beginning the 2028-29 school year.
Second mention.
All right, we have a motion by Vice President Mayberry. We have a second by Clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on or hands up from Trustee Phoenix. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, Chief Zimmerman, and thank you so much, team. That closes item 3.07 and Section 3 in its entirety and brings us now to Section 4, our reports. Starting with item 4.01, our Student Representatives Report. Peyton, thank you so much for being here today and what do you have for us?
Of course. Thank you for having me. I just want to discuss some of the things we talked about at our last meeting. A big topic of ours is the gates. A lot of kids feel a little more unsafe with the gates being there. They're kind of intimidating. So, a big solution that we're thinking of is trying to explain and elaborate to the kids that these gates are a good thing and make them understand what's happening. And also bring more of like a tradition. We're thinking of having like seniors either like leave like a lock, like a cute decorated lock, or like some decorations. Yeah, so that's with the gates. And then we're also discussing dual enrollment classes and how we want more around the district for our schools. And then, to add on to that, there's a big concern with like the dual credit classes ending before the other classes are. And we're trying to come up with some solutions that maybe there can be like a part of the curriculum, just like work-focused things to do for the children once they're done with those dual credits. We're thinking for like the upperclassmen, if they want to go to college, they can focus on like scholarships and essays and everything that aligns with college. And if they want to go to like trade schools, do the things they need to do there. But for the lowerclassmen, we're just thinking maybe they just start looking into what they want to do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peyton. That's really insightful. And I have a student at Reno High, so I very much understand what you're talking about with that. So, thank you. Those are great ideas. And I know Superintendent Ernst was nodding along and taking notes. So, that closes item 4.01 and brings us now to item 4.02, our Board Reports. Trustee Phoenix, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, I sure will. Short and sweet here tonight. You know, this last time, I've been to the Office of Academics, met with Donna Angari, and it provided me a good overview to help me understand what things are happening in the classroom, teacher clarity, and a whole bunch of other stuff. So, it was good to speak with him. So, I have a good foundation as I move forward. I did go to Nancy Gomes Elementary School, met with Principal Niki Kapova Villa, and who has been there for about seven years. And then, on this day, the power went out. It was kind of nice to see where, well, they struggled a little bit, but they continued to march on with their day. But a lot goes into it, just to put it out there. Safety is number one for them. And, you know, escorting students and cold lunches, no phone, no intercom, no wifi, and the old-fashioned radios, just the way that they went about business and the analog system that they have in place. So, this is not the first time. But it happened to the community and the district did a very good job at meeting their needs, trying to overcome that. And then I met with Jan Van Tras, Special Education Services, who provided an overview of K-12 Special Education LRE Curriculum Continuum. And she provided a ladder of progression, which was very helpful to understand what we were doing at the district and a brief on the special education programming. This allowed me to better understand what's happening with special education. So, just in short, that's what I had going on this last few weeks here. And I just want to conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Mayberry, and then we'll go around this way.
Okay, this is going to be a real challenge. I'm going to challenge all of you to see if you can keep your board report shorter than mine. My school visits include the Inspire, Encompass Academy as well. Appreciate Principal Khan's opportunity to have me out. So, I had a chance to visit Shaw Middle School and Kate Smith Elementary. We talked a lot about charters today, had two important charters. I, speaking of charters, I had an opportunity to attend the 25th anniversary of the Coral Academy with the trustee Woodley, trustee Westlake, and trustee Nicolet were there. So, it's been a good two weeks. Thank you. That's 23, 22 seconds.
I decline your challenge. All right, so, I remembered. I had the most fun marching with Reno High School and their JROTC program. And there you can see their color guard. And I have to say that all of the JROTC programs, we can be so very proud of them. They were, they had a lot of fun. And when it came to marching, they were just professional and they were proud and it was just wonderful. And there I am giving flags to the little kids. That was the best part. It really was. And I made the little ones' promise. Of course, they all wanted the big flags. And I said, "You got to make me a promise. You're not going to use these as swords." I'm pretty sure they didn't keep that promise because I saw some later. And then, I want to say that the JROTC Silver State Brigade, the entirety of the JROTC, they were just stunning. I show this just for fun. This is the drive on Village Parkway when I was going to visit Inskheep and Cold Springs Middle School, Inskheep Elementary School, and I just had to stop in the middle of the street. But you can see there was no one coming, at least toward me. That, it was just stunning. And so, I just had to stop. And you can leave that up while I speak as a distraction. The Reno Huskies Color Guard also presented at Swope at the Hall of Heroes event. That was absolutely wonderful. I attended the student-led Veterans Luncheon Celebration at Marcy Hers. Those students were just, they were so organized. I want to share a few highlights and I have some goodies that I'll leave in this basket about my continuing keeping our kids safe, safe routes to schools. And this is news that we can use. Between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and Washoe County, and our own Washoe County School District, these agencies have coordinated to make several things happen. And notice these changes, that 30 minutes before the first bell, you'll see the flashing lights and then they will stop for the rest of the day until 30 minutes before the end of school and 30 minutes after school has ended. So, you will notice a change in the flashing lights. To that, I want to say, don't think that it's okay to change your habits. Please be safe in our schools. I also want to say that I've been doing some research on AI because I'm really trying to get my mind around how we move forward. I have a handout for each one of my trustees and I want to tell the community to please go on the DOV Nevada Gov, Office of Teaching and Learning, and pull up their Nevada's Stellar Pathway. 54 pages of what Nevada is doing to help our schools and this AI technology. Thank you.
Thank you for that beautiful picture on the way to Inskheep. Michael Inskheep was a very good friend and colleague and I love that we've named a school after such a great, incredible educator. I actually remembered to send my pictures to JJ today, so I'll share. I attended the Jeffrey Rosen Event. He's the president and CEO of the Constitution Center at UNR and it was such an inspiring evening. And I normally don't talk a lot about my civics life on the dais, but I think it's really so incredibly important that we have such really cool opportunities for our students. We had a lot of students attend that evening and it was a really cool event. So, I just wanted to share that. I also got to attend the AFP, which is the Association of Fundraising Professionals Luncheon. And low and behold, we, the Outstanding Youth Philanthropists, were Washoe County students. For the last two decades, there's been a high school circle of giving and the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada provides them with funding and they get to choose which philanthropies that they put money towards and they were honored with that. Incredible honor and what a great learning opportunity for our students to have this experience. So, I just wanted to shout them out. We, a few of us, attended the Boosted Diplomas fundraiser and I don't think I sent you guys these pictures, so I'll get those to you. Sorry about that. We had a great evening and I got to see my former boss from the Department of Ed, who also was the former director of the Northwest Regional Professional Development, Dave Brinkamp. So, had to snap a picture with him. That's a really incredible organization that's working with foster kids in our area and doing mentoring and tutoring with them. And their graduation rate for the students they work with is pretty unreal. So, typically foster kids graduate at a rate of somewhere in the 40% range and their students that they are directly working with are graduating in the 80% to 90% range. And so, it's a really incredible organization. So, thanks to Boosted Diplomas for inviting the board. And then, finally, yesterday, I braved the winter storm and got to visit all of the Incline schools. And I also got to finally see my uncle's Hall of Fame banner. So, that's the picture of me right there. My stepmother and my aunts and uncles all attended Incline. Incline is very close to my heart. My grandfather was the principal of Incline High School. And so, I love the opportunity to go see the schools and the really, really great stuff they're doing. I also visited Dodson, Pacolo, and Lenz and forgot to take pictures because I just got really invested in talking to everybody. So, that's it.
Hi, everyone. I attended the Armistice Celebration at the Senior Center on Richard's Way, hosted by my friend and Vietnam veteran Pamela Baker. And I am really pleased that we are recognizing our veterans that have sacrificed and served our country. It was a very nice celebration. A lot of school visits, but the one that I want to talk about was my visit at Desert Skies. And Principal Teresa's doing amazing things, along with all of the schools in the vertical. Getting back to what Trustee Hall said, the vertical is so important. And in the, they call it the Valley Vertical. They are working together to attack chronic absenteeism. And one of the things that they're doing is all the principals have developed like a play and it starts out with the kindergartner trying on the graduation robes and how large those robes are and the natural progression to get to graduation. And one thing that Principal Gladys said from her part in this, that Principal Gladys from Esther Bennett, it all begins with showing up one day, one step, one smile at a time. And the other principals in the vertical, it's amazing the ingenuity and the time they have spent on this. Donut Challenge last week was to Lois Allen Elementary School. Shout out to Principal Jill Dickey and her teaching staff. There were five winning classrooms. One of the classrooms had 100% attendance for a week. I went to the Coral Academy, 25th Celebration attended by other trustees. I can tell you, Executive Director Fahey can sure throw a party. And then, I want to end with Principal Joel Pichetto. And what an amazing human being. He sent a card to me and gave me this Stay Gold button. And along with this, this is one of his initiatives that he has started. "In my recent goal to enhance opportunities to be grateful, I started a Stay Gold quest where I intentionally look for and recognize good things around me. Like Johnny and Pony Boy in The Outsiders, this initiative reminds me us to look for beauty, hold on to it, and stay golden, despite Robert Frost's warning that nothing gold can stay." And I just want to say, where you push forward positive and love, we're going to get a return on that. And I just want to wish everyone Happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. So, first and foremost, I want to congratulate our McQueen Lancers. They won Friday, 31 to 16. They did play Reno High School, but they are now our 4A North Regional Champions. Especially, I want to give a shout out to tight end Brooks Porter. He was voted as the North MVP. He caught 25 passes for 412 yards and 10 touchdowns and was in on 92 tackles on defense and had four and a half sacks. They will play Sloan Canyon for the 4A state title next Tuesday in the Allegiant Stadium in Vegas. Want to express our gratitude to the Raiders because every year, they've given us their stadium for free to the state of Nevada. stadium for free to the state of Nevada. So we really appreciate that. I also want to recognize and acknowledge linebacker McQueen Senior Zach Dragos, who was voted Defensive Player of the Year with ninety-five tackles and five and a half sacks. And I will like to acknowledge and give kudos to Reno High's senior quarterback, Raylan Wilson. He was named the 4A Offensive Player of the Year. He had, he was one hundred and forty-eight for two hundred and forty-nine passing for two thousand and two hundred yards. So and twenty-one touchdowns. He also rushed for six hundred and thirteen yards. Yeah, he's a bad, you know, you know what? So yeah, exactly. He's a good football player, great football player. So tomorrow morning, I'll be leaving at four AM for NIAA meeting in Vegas. So I'll be there all day tomorrow. Call Academy Dinner, that was great. I had fun with my fellow trustees and I got to sit with Mr. Khan, had dinner with him. So he likes to have dinner with families and we had dinner with him. I also want to give a shout out and appreciation to the Redfield Foundation. Dr. Nicolet and I, we attended the When I Grew Up baseball, basketball game, women's basketball game, and it was filled with our kids. And they were very, very loud. I've never seen Law Event Center that loud. It was, yeah, I needed earplugs. If anyone here wants free hugs from kids, I recommend you go visit Mr. Smith, Ryan Smith at Glenn Duncan. Because I love going to see him because whenever I do, I get hugs all day. Any room you walk into and you're next to him, you get some of that love. Yes, free hugs. So that's great. He's doing a great job over there. And then also Newton Learning Center. I want to express my gratitude to Rebecca Leroux and Denise Menzies over there. For those of you who don't know, they are a very small school, fifty max. And they assist and help with neurodivergent learning disability children. And their goal is to help transition them into general pop. So they work with them, they help them, and they want to get them there where they can send them back into the general education. So we appreciate what they do. Thank you.
Don't, don't start me, JJ, because I need every second. Okay, we'll start with that one and then I'll let you know when, when the pictures turn.
All right. So in the spirit of the season, I offer my fifth annual board report of thanks and gratitude. I am amazed at the service-minded heart our kids show each other and the model they set for the adults around them. Two students in particular, Ella, an eighth grader at Swope Middle School in Georgia, and eighth grader at Coral Academy, touched my heart. For their Girl Scout Silver Award, Ella and Georgia tackled the issue of period poverty among young teen girls with their Project Angela initiative. Ella and Georgia fundraised for and made hundreds of take-home kits with enough pads and tampons to cover a girl's monthly menstrual cycle. Ella and Georgia, I am thankful for you. Our employees feed my fire to fight for what's right, within our own system and beyond it. I was touring the central kitchen facility when I met nutrition services worker Amber Bass. Amber prepares meals for the most delicate and vulnerable students with allergies, unique needs, and feeding styles. She makes meals as close to the regular menu items as possible so kids don't feel different. Last week, the governor named Amber the 2026 Nevada Recognizing Inspiring School Employees Rise Award winner. A statewide honor, I enthusiastically nominated her for. Amber, I am thankful for you. Speaking of food, I am grateful for Rochelle Murillo, Jacinia Surga, Lisa Guzman, Brenda Costello, and Eric Olson, who work for our Family Resource Centers and the Intervention Department. They worked tirelessly with partners like the Food Bank of Northern Nevada, Catholic charities, communities, and schools, and more, to ensure all our kids had a meal and food to take home if they needed it during the government shutdown. To all those who helped feed our children and neighbors, I am thankful for you. All of us adults should join our children in learning and growing within WCSD, and that includes me, too. I am grateful to the Nevada Speaker of the Assembly, Steve Jaeger, for naming me to the Commission on Recruitment and Retention, where I will join my fellow members in examining challenges related to Nevada's educator workforce. This is a new experience for me, and I am excited to learn and grow. Mr. Speaker, I am thankful for you. I am grateful to the exceptional educators who pour their talent into our students every day. They inspire me to stay true in my convictions, and I will always fight for what they deserve. Krista Rossi, Christy Scholl, Julia Dyer, and Una Fleishman of Collin Ranch Elementary are some of those teachers. I am in awe of what I see in their work and know that their level of talent and commitment is replicated in every corner of our district. Krista, Christy, Julia, and Una, I am thankful for you. Finally, I am grateful for the three people whose lives mean more to me than I could ever express, my dear sons and husband. Every year I have with you is my most cherished gift. You share me generously with so many, understand my passion, and support my service to our neighbors. Sean, Braden, and Scott, I am thankful for you, and I love you. Happy Thanksgiving to all. I hope your holiday is filled with food, friends, family, and joy. Thank you.
And I know I went over, but I took Vice President Mayberry's second. And I don't feel bad about it. Okay. That closes item 4.02 and now brings us to item 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Wow, lots of wonderful, wonderful things. And thank you so much for sharing all of the many, many wonderful things that are happening in Washto County School District. Really happy that you get out and about, you're able to experience that, get those hugs, and really see what we're doing. I'll take you to one day. It was November 5th. The winds were howling in the Truckee Meadows. And fences were being blown down and power was being lost throughout many regions. And I bring this up because it's a testimony to the teamwork that we have in Washto County School District, from facilities to communications to academics. We had to start the day without any food, so we made sure we mobilized. Cold lunches, cold breakfasts. We made sure that we were able to maintain the operations of around twenty schools that had power loss throughout the day. Some lost it for two, three, four hours. But it was really a testimony to the dedication that we have in the school district to really do what's best for our students regardless of, of the circumstances. So just wanted to share that. That was a, a real neat something. And then I'll just say, a happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I, I'm grateful for, for everyone and just a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ernst. All right, that closes item 4.03 and section four in its entirety. We'll move on now to section five, our closing items, beginning with item 5.01, public comment. JJ, who are we welcoming?
Connie Silveria.
Welcome, Connie. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Connie Silvera. And first, I just want to give you a little tip. If Adam Khan ever invites you for the dinners, go. Because his mother is the best cook I've ever seen. So that's just a little tip. Okay, moving on, the greenhouse. We still have a greenhouse. So I'm still hopeful. So I'm still hoping you'll listen to reason and at least let us meet with some people and talk about it. I mean, all this talk about repurposing all these different locations, why aren't we talking about this greenhouse? Why aren't we talking about, you know, if it's going to be torn down, what is the plan? Is there a plan? Or we, we just tear things down and don't have a plan? The only thing we've heard so far is possibly a parking lot or a dirt lot, which would really be sad. There's a gorgeous orchard right next to the greenhouse that produces. And there were people not that long ago out there harvesting fruit. I mean, it's an absolute spectacular space. And there's so many, especially with the food insecurity that we're, that many people experience nowadays with the snaps and all of this. And we have all of the nonprofits that were willing to step up. I mean, if we put the word out, we have some that are already interested. It, it's not a lot of expense. I've read the structural report, just like you have. What is needs is maintenance. It needs just, has had deferred maintenance for many years. It's not that expensive. We've gotten quotes on what we can do. For twenty thousand dollars, you know, the worst of it can be fixed. So I'm hoping that you will consider letting us meet, put something together, just so we can understand better. If you're going to still tear it down, at least give us a reason, because this would be really sad. And also, I just want to, if I have, okay, I have fifty-eight seconds. So I just want to throw in, as far as repurposing these schools, I want you to really consider, these are inner-city schools that you guys are talking about. And these are my neighborhoods. And we struggle to keep out blight and problems. And I really hope that if you're going to repurpose them, you really think about what it's going to be and not just turn over to developers in another luxury apartment. I'd hate to see these stool, schools go, especially when we know that we will get more students. We will continue to grow in Reno. This is a fabulous area. So just, I just wanted to throw that in. But please, help us with this greenhouse. Give us a light, just a little bit of hope. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Connie. And I do just want to point out that with the repurposing, we will have community events, and I will make sure that you find out about them when they start coming, okay? Thank you.
Paul Hollis.
Welcome, Mr. Hollis. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Board, for listening to us. I'm following up with Connie. I know, President Smith, you told us in the first comment, the building's unsound. That's not true. You have the report. We have gotten estimates from the manufacturer, twenty grand will fix that building perfectly good. It needs some plumbing and it needs some glazing and some maintenance. All we're trying to do is, who can we talk to? I've left phone calls with all staff, never have heard one thing. I don't know, I haven't called you, Superintendent, but it's gonna start. Who can we talk to and present our plan? In this magazine right here, you have a wonderful article about Alice Taylor and Mount Rose School. There's so much money available to make this into an educational opportunity for students. We already have a huge commitment from the Boys and Girls Club right across the street that would love to use that facility. There's nothing unsafe about it. And if we can just discuss this with staff, we would love to do it. I've tried to call and for two months have not heard a word. Please help us out. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thank you very much, Mr. Hollis. Welcome, is it Harman?
Harme.
Harman, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Harme. I'm a medical senior at the Academy of Arts Careers and Technology. Thank you for granting me this opportunity. I've come here today to discuss accountability towards our students in this district, specifically towards the school of choice program. A brick, a big problem that I've noticed while being in high school is that going to a school that you're not zoned for should be based off of behavior and academics. Students in our district have the choice to go to another school that they're not zoned for. Some reasons for this may include specific sport programs, preferred locations, and clubs. Personally, I'm zoned for Damani, but I chose to go to Reed my freshman year because of their medical program. However, there are some students who cannot get accepted into their school of choice because spots are limited. Some of these students who get into the school of choice don't behave or perform well. I believe that choosing what school you go to is a privilege and that you need to keep up with your academic and behavioral expectations. Let me give you an example. I went to Reed for my freshman year because of their biomed program. But at the time, there were other people that I knew who also wanted to get into Reed for the same purpose. They couldn't get the education they wanted because spots were taken. This isn't a bad thing if all these students maintained expectations they needed upon entry. But I personally knew a lot of students who didn't perform well in many categories, getting bad grades, causing trouble in the school, and making the environment unfriendly. I feel as the students who really want to get the best education for themselves deserves to take the spots of those who don't take advantage of the program. Students who don't earn spots should be facing consequences. These consequences can be as far as being removed from the school and sent back to their zoned schools, which opens an opportunity for the people, for the hundreds of applicants who originally didn't make it. And most, and this mostly pertains to my school of choice, which is AACT. At AACT, which is a school that provides many opportunities, you must apply and meet certain expectations to be considered. But once students have been accepted, there should be more accountability. If students are not maintaining expectations, even after receiving support, schools should be allowed to give consequences, such as dismissal from the school. This can be both positive to the students who is getting dismissed and peers of the students. I don't see why, or I don't see what we have now as being fair by keeping students in an environment where they cannot succeed. Addressing this issue will improve our school ranking, which has been depleting over the past couple of years. All I ask is that we start giving more accountability towards our students, because an equal chance isn't always a fair chance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That was very, very well said. Thank you.
Tayla Holland.
Sure.
Sure.
Harper Hutchinson.
You got it. No, don't be sorry. No, no, no. Women in particular, we always apologize for things that we haven't done wrong. So no apologies. If this is what you need, we're more than happy to do that. Welcome, Harper.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Harper Hutchinson, and I am a senior in the Medical Academy at Arts Careers and Technology, the Academy of Arts Careers and Technology. And the three of us are here today to share, share our experiences with career and technical student organizations, or CTSOs. These events are the future of our education, and they fully align with your goal number five, to empower all learners for their future, and more specifically, increase access to advanced coursework, dual credit, and CTE classes. As a member of the Medical Academy at AACT, I have personally participated in several CTSO events, including HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America, and Skills USA. I have firsthand seen how these organizations promote leadership and bridge the gap between school and the workforce. Not only do these programs and competitions foster a love for learning, but they also promote teamwork. And right now, our state and country are in desperate need for these skilled workers. These CTE programs and CTSO events create prepared and skilled students who are ready for the workforce or post-secondary education. Today, many students in Washto County are unable to participate in these events because their financial situations make it difficult for them to pay out of pocket. While the number of skilled workers in Nevada is beginning to rapidly decrease, the funding is not matching this need for, for skilled workers. Allocating more money in these, into these programs will allow the economy in Washto County, as well as Nevada, to expand and adapt. I understand that the challenges of budgeting the district's budget, but even modest reallocations combined with state, federal, and community partnerships could significantly expand CTE access. Programs like these prepare students for Nevada's fastest-growing industries and deserve targeted investment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and very well done, Harper.
My name is Tayla Holland, and I am here today to discuss the data and statistics over the years and how it relates to us students. Charts show over the years of 2020 to 2024, participation has begun to decrease. In 2021 to 2022, we had a total participation of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-one students. Compared to 2023, 2024, we have seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. Although you may say, that is not a significant amount, we witnessed students declining opportunities to participate within competitions and other state and even national events due to funding reasons. We are firsthand witnessing many students being held back due to money issues, thus making it harder to increase the number of students applying their skills to real-world situations, along with building career-ready students. The US economy is facing growing skill shortages in critical occupations due, due to an unmet need for workers with the post-secondary credentials associated with in-demand skills. From 2024 through 2032, eighteen point four million experienced workers with post-secondary education are expected to retire, far outpacing the thirteen point eight million younger workers who will enter the labor market with equivalent educational qualifications. This is almost a five-million-person deficit in the workforce. Compounding the problem, the US economy is expected to add six hundred and eighty-five thousand new jobs requiring post-secondary education and training over the same period. This quote from Georgetown University directly proves that in order to meet the need for skilled and experienced workers in Nevada and Washto County, funding must increase. That was- That workforce gap is a real, is real and approaching faster than we think. The truth is, CTSOs are one of the strongest resources we have to prepare students to fill those positions. But without proper funding, we are limiting the number of students who can gain those skills, earn certifications, compete at advanced levels, and step confidently into Nevada's future workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Tayla.
Leisha Sanchez.
Leisha?
Leisha.
Leisha, welcome, Leisha.
Thank you. Members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Leisha Sanchez Delida, and my experience with CTSOs come from being an active CTE student and participant in a leadership role. I currently represent Nevada at the national level as the National Region Five Vice President for Skills USA, the number one workforce development organization. Through this role, I have grown professionally and seen firsthand how these organizations help meet the demand for the skilled trades in our communities, impacting students everywhere. Thanks to Skills USA, I have had the opportunity to advocate on Capitol Hill, develop strong public speaking skills, and connect with numerous business and industry partners such as the president of 3M and other successful companies that collaborate and support CTSOs like Skills USA. Due to budget cuts and the overall lack of funding, I have witnessed a significant decrease in student engagement. Our stories represent thousands of students across Washoe County and the country as a whole who want to learn real skills, explore career pathways, and contribute to our future. I urge the Board to reevaluate how education funds are allocated and consider the short and long-term effects of investing in CTSOs. When you support these programs, you are supporting students' futures, strengthening our community, and helping build a skilled workforce for Nevada. I hope you will take these concerns into consideration when moving forward and help us empower all learners for their futures. We thank you for the time and the work you do for students like us. Thank you.
Thank you, Leisha. Incredible. Very, very well done.
The Board received emails from Ishmael Aralano, Yvonne Birch Lucas, and Frank Schneck.
Thank you very much. Well, that closes item 5.01 and brings us now to item 5.02, our next meeting announcement. That will be Tuesday, December 9th, 2025. And I do also want to point out that there is one single regularly scheduled meeting that month, so one meeting in the month of December. And then prior to moving on now to item 5.03, I will take a point of privilege and congratulate the Spanish Springs High School on their 5A championship, defeating Minogue. And now moving on to the state championship, thank you for indulging that point of privilege. And now at item 5.03, adjournment at 5:55 PM. Thank you.